I would like to welcome everyone watching on ITV and via livestream and call the February 14, 2023 regular meeting to order with all board members present. The Navy J ROTC color guard from Canyon Hills High School will now present the colors. Please stand for presentation of the colors. Is that you?
Color guard. Four, there, colors. Ready, cut. Colors.
Trustee Nepomassino, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Four, there, colors.
Thank you, please be seated. Yeah, thank you. All my screams, because that's the... Yep. I would like to make a motion to adopt today's agenda. Please note that item F3, adoption of resolution in the matter of support for state legislation expanding student board member rights, has been withdrawn from the agenda. Is there a motion? Second? Okay. Okay. All, um, student board members, please vote. Let's start with Nepomassino.
Aye.
Quatoriana?
Aye.
Thank you, and all others. Okay, motion passes unanimously with student board members concur.
Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public, and the board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. Board bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. The list of public speakers is attached to agenda item B2. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. If you would like to sign up for in-person public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you. Now, I would like to ask students from Doyle Elementary to come to the podium to introduce tonight's student presentation. And thank you for joining us on Valentine's Day.
Good evening, trustees, President Basel and Dr. Jackson. I have the fortunate pleasure of introducing some students from Doyle. They're very special. We have our Wellness Ambassadors. Could you please raise your hand, Wellness Ambassadors? And our No Place for Hate students, please raise your hand. Give them a round of applause. And they are going to share how Doyle is a very safe school to be in and learn, and a wonderful place to thrive as well, so we'll go ahead and get started.
Can you please start the video?
Good evening, board members. My name is Duncan. I'm one of Doyle's No Place for Hate program leaders. No Place for Hate is a system that brings together students, educators, and families to build a positive school climate. No Place for Hate complements other programs we have at Doyle, like our Second Step Emotional Lessons and Doyle's Monthly Positive Character Treats.
No Place for Hate honors diversity, promotes respect for differences, challenges, bias, and bullying. It is a year-round program that aims to be integrated into all aspects of our school culture. Student leaders play an important role in our school's No Place for Hate program.
So before No Place for Hate, I was a very shy person and didn't like talking to people. But now I'm in No Place for Hate, I will show my voice more. And sometimes younger kids recognize me around school, and that makes me feel good.
Our Student Leader Committee has both 4th and 5th grade students who participate in different ways. One of the many things we do is present a No Place for Hate pledge to classes. Each classroom is given a pledge poster. Students sign the poster as an agreement to the pledge, and it is displayed in their classroom for the school year.
Through school-wide student-led lessons, including presenting at our monthly Black Stop Assemblies, No Place for Hate leaders discuss awareness about diversity and identity. No Place for Hate leaders build skills in leadership and communication. The program allows students to be the drivers of positive change in our school community.
I feel stronger. I feel stronger in confidence in speaking and confidence when I came to No Place for Hate. Here in No Place for Hate, you get to do more kind and respectful acts. I feel if you're in No Place for Hate, you get to teach kids or even adults. If you're in No Place for Hate, you get to have, you get to do fun things, not only... Like passing out posters and participating in assemblies.
The skills emphasized in our No Place for Hate program become lifelong tools for collaboration, communication, and cooperation. That is why Doyle has committed to building community and belonging through consistent appreciation of human values and positive relationships. This offers students like us to create a safe and harmonious environment to learn and grow. As Maya Angelou said, "We must create a climate where people agree that human beings are more alike than unalike." The only way to do that is through education. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate, and I am one of the Student Wellness Ambassadors at Doyle Elementary School. We have a team of 12 Wellness Ambassadors this year, and we are working together to bring health and wellness activities to our school. We have already started a running and walking club that students are so excited about, and we plan and participated in the Great Kindness Challenge Spirit Week.
Hi, my name is Anika. The first project we worked on was starting up a running and walking club. Students can come early once a week to run or walk before school. Some students run up to a mile each time. Our running and walking club is inclusive, and everyone can participate. Running and walking helps our students achieve their goals while making new friends and having fun.
Hi, my name is Taha. Last week, our school participated in the Great Kindness Challenge. Our Wellness Ambassadors worked together to create a Kindness Challenge Spirit Week for our school. We created a week of fun kindness-themed dress-up days. Students were encouraged to participate in the Kindness Challenge each day. My favorite challenge was learning to say hello in a new language.
Hello.
Ahlan.
Hola.
Bonjour.
Hey.
Ciao.
Ni hao.
Marhaba.
Salam.
Hi, my name is Leila. During the week, our school showed kindness to each other, to ourselves, and to other culture. We did random apps to kindness for people. We picked up trash on campus. We learned to say hello in other languages, and we did a canned food drive to donate to the San Diego Food Bank. I really enjoyed the kindness challenge because it gave us a chance to make new friends while being kind. Thank you for having us here to talk about all the exciting things we're doing at Doyle Elementary.
Thank you so much to you guys. You did a fantastic job, and I can tell you worked hard on that. Tell you put some time in, and I heard it was very student-led, so that's what we'd love to hear. So, thank you. Any of the other board members have anything to add? So... Yes?
Just so you know, you just raised the bar on the staff presentations. So you have staff over there going, "Oh, no." Well done, and thank you for all that you're doing at Doyle, and for our community and for our district. Thank you for representing us very well. And listen to your parents, but if you have, if it's up to me and Dr. Bagula, you can have whatever she gave you for Valentine's Day. But listen to your parents, okay? Thank you so much.
Just one thing, I'd like to compliment you on your hybrid model, just having someone video and then also sharing in person and knowing when to come in. So, thank you for that beautiful choreography. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready?
Can we take a picture with them?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Picture, let's do a picture. Okay, we will now consider item C2, issuance of proclamation recognizing Jeremy McQueen. Trustee Nepomassino, please present the item.
Whereas Jeremy McQueen, a native San Diegan and graduate of the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts, is an award-winning choreographer dedicated to storytelling rooted in experience and social engagement. And whereas his work aims to create spaces of comfort, solace, and connection through reflection, a sharing of observations of what is going on around him. And whereas at the age of eight, Jeremy saw a production of The Phantom of the Opera and was immediately drawn to the arts, which led to his lifelong study of music, theater, and dance. And whereas Jeremy McQueen's choreographic works have appeared in the John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, Carnegie Hall, Summer Stage in Central Park, Jacob's Pillow Dance Inside-Out Series, dancers responding to AIDS, Fire Island Dance Festival, and has been commissioned to create works for organizations, including American Ballet Theaters, Jacqueline Kennedy's Onassis School, the Kentucky Center for the Performing Arts, and the Ailey School. And whereas McQueen cites as his guiding principle, discipline, doing what you know you're supposed to do, even when no one is there to make sure you do it. And whereas it is the craft of storytelling and making a way for yourself through discipline and focus that led McQueen to start the Black Iris Project, a creation of space for other like-minded artists to reflect their experiences. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of the San Diego Unified School District recognizes Jeremy McQueen for his extraordinary contributions to the arts and for his mentorship of young people who are interested in pursuing theater, music, and dance as professions.
And I second this motion, and I just want to say that I want to thank Leah and some of the other students for inviting me to go and see his performance on last Wednesday night. And I would advise you, if you can ever go and see any of his work, it will... It took me back, back to high school. And some memories that I had, this mother is sitting there, a former teacher of our district at, um... Do you know where that is? And it was just incredible to really see the depth of the work that he demonstrated in his choreography. I mean, it was just awesome. I, I don't know, I found myself almost in tears at times just to see the way he depicted it. And I, I'm proud of the fact that he came from San Diego Unified, and he's out there doing good work now. And I would advise you all, if you ever get the opportunity to see him, you were there also, yes. And lots of students were there. And I just want to say thank you, and we're proud of him.
Yes, I've had the privilege to know Jeremy personally since I was a freshman, since I was 13. And just witnessing his work, it's truly a manifestation of love and excellence. And him being a product of San Diego Unified, of incredible people like his mother, Mary McQueen, it's just such an honor and privilege to know him. And his work is truly something special. So thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Ms. McQueen.
And now we'd like to ask if, Mary McQueen, if you'd like to come forward and just say a few words?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is an honor as well as a pleasure to be here at a board meeting. I've been in many board meetings before in the past when I was working as a teacher at Jean Farb Middle School. But it's a super honor to be here to receive this recognition from my son, Jeremy McQueen, the director and choreographer and creator of the Black Iris Project. Thank you again for presenting this proclamation to him. Thank you.
Okay, I think we need to just vote to be official, and then we're gonna do a picture with Mr. McQueen. So, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say really quickly that, you know, the, the work that I saw was obviously amazing, but I just want to point out, just the way that Jeremy carried himself and his personality really spoke to me. I remember he talked a lot about, you know, the struggles, the financial struggles that he goes through being an artist. But what really spoke to me is that despite that, he still went through and donated 200 tickets? 500? 500 tickets to students just to promote art? And the way that he carried himself, being unapologetically black and, and embracing a lot of the almost repressed sides of him was really beautiful to see. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. That was wonderful. Yes, did you want more comment?
And on top of all of this, he also won an Emmy for Black Iris Project.
Wow, that's fantastic. All right, so we have, I believe, a motion, and Dr. White here is paying seconded. And let's do all in favor. Let's start with the students.
Aye.
Trustee Quatoriana, trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
And everyone else? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, we can do a quick photo. Yeah. Okay. Yes. Yeah, I was like...
Yes.
Is there one of walls in there?
No.
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 Yeah, her wall.
I'm sorry. I've done that twice today.
Tell her about my real experience.
Okay, photograph, let's see. We don't have anything to report out for general counsel? Nope.
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Jackson, are there any administrative assignments to report out?
Thank you, President Basel. Yes, I have four appointments this evening. The first one is the Program Manager for Cross-Content Literacy, Sarah Matthews, who's been in our district and has taken on a new role. Congratulations. Want to welcome back a new teammate who was with us and, and has worked in a few other districts, but Director of Food Services, Alicia Petrone. Welcome home, welcome back. And also, I mentioned a Food Services Director currently held by Gary Patel. Proud to announce Director of Special Projects, Gary Patel. I know you'll do great work. And finally, the Director of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics in a different role but continuing to serve our students, Julie Garcia. Those are the appointments this evening. Thank you.
All right, this time, I'd like our ASB student, Michelle Lul, from East Village Middle College High School, to introduce yourself. And please tell us about yourself, as well as your school, and what's going on at East Village Middle College High School.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Lule, and I'm from East Village Middle College High School.
Sorry about that, I said your name wrong.
It's okay. I'm the president, and I'm very happy to be representing my school. As you guys may not know or do know already, we are the only comprehensive middle college high school in San Diego Unified. Our school design offers a rigorous, equitable, accessible program in which students can self-select college courses and work with their counselors to create an individualized, sorry, dual-enrollment journey that meets their academic goals. Students can take a minimum of two high school courses each semester with staff, who are not only teachers but mentors in their field, supporting students with their high school and college work. Students may take up to 11 college credits per term, including summer and winter sessions. This fall, we, this fall, we experienced a 10% enrollment increase, and East Village Middle College High School students have completed over 150 college classes, such as English 101, Sociology 101, Black Studies 140A, Math 104, and additional courses in a wide, a wide range of subjects like art, dance, history, Japanese, chemistry, and so much others. I know that I've taken about 13 college classes so far. And I'm very happy to report that our overall school GPA is a 3.75, and the EVMCHHS administration wanted me to share that currently we are opening our enrollment for the 2023 and 2024 school year. As an open-boundary, open-enrollment, atypical school, we welcome students from all over San Diego throughout the year, who are ready for a challenging, yet supportive educational experience in a small school learning environment. Interested students can apply directly through our school website. And besides taking on academic challenges, we also engage in a wide variety of club activities, community service opportunities, and events on the City College campus that we are located on. Students recently participated in the campus Lunar New Year event, an African-American campus celebration, and several luncheons sponsored by City College. We also have started a new chapter with the SDSU Mesa Club that supports our students who are interested in math, engineering, and science. And we are also participating in Mesa, Mesa Day this spring. Our school ASB is also active in our community and has had many fun campus events and fundraiser, sorry, fundraisers, like our canned food drive and our Suicide Prevention Month event. Every school, every year, our ASB is partnered with a local charity to raise awareness and funding. This year, we have supported the San Diego Food Bank to bring awareness to local hunger concerns. So far, we have raised over $2,000 in an interactive virtual shopper website that our students have helped launch. This link is available on their website. And everyone is encouraged to check it out because every donation counts. Our Rotary Club has also worked all year, and we have nearly completed our Native Garden that is located on the A Building. Our official dedication will take place on March 3rd in honor of Jerry Melloy, our founding Rotary, Rotary Interact Club mentor and advisor. Lastly, we'd like to welcome all of our board members and whole community to our spring showcase on the City College campus. On April 28th, we will have music, food trucks, games, and we recommend that all incoming families and interested students who want to learn more about East Village come and join. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michaela. No, that was fantastic. I know it's, if you're not used to being up here, it seemed a little scary, but you did a great job. Do you have any other comments for the board members? Yep, Richard?
Michaela, thank you so much, and we're all, you know, gasping when you said you've taken 13 college courses. This is incredible. I was at your graduation last year, and your valedictorian, I think, entered Berkeley as a junior after graduating from high school. So it's, it's an amazing community that you have, you know, at the school. And can we, it might be a little bit early, but can we ask you what your plans are for next year?
That's a good question. Well, I'm really interested in a lot of stuff, but I'd also like to go to Berkeley and study astronomy. I really love science, and astronomy's just always been my favorite since, like, elementary school. Yeah, so...
Fantastic. Anyone else? You good? All right. Thank you so much. All right, we are going to move on to Superintendent Jackson again, who is gonna please provide his information report.
Thank you, President Basel. And as I begin, as we celebrate Black History Month this month of February, I want to lift up some students, and I want to lift up their voice through their name and acknowledge that our students developed a great ceremony as they wanted to raise and celebrate our blackness and our community as black students and staff as they raised the Black Lives Matter flag recently. And so, I want to publicly thank them. And so, I want to publicly thank them, and call their names, and the schools, to acknowledge them publicly. So first, the coordinator of this, working with our Equity and Belonging Department, Caroline Kamen, 12th grader from La Jolla High School. Cory Coquette, 3rd grader at Ocean Beach Elementary School. Josiah Augustine, a 4th grader at Franklin Elementary School. Cameron Campbell, 5th grade student at Bird Rock Elementary. Stone Morgan, a 1st grade student at Bird Rock Elementary School. Henry Anderson III, a 7th grade student at Millennial Tech Middle School. Stephanie Adgye, a 7th grade student at Millennial Tech Middle School. And finally, Olinda Fuller Lidle, an 8th grade student at Mann Middle School. They planned this. They designed this. And I'm so proud that it was designed by our students and presented by our students, without the adults in the way. And as I've said, more of them and less of us is always a good thing. And they continue to show up in that way. And thank you. And thank you to the staff for creating the space for them to do so. And thank you to the families, and thank you to our entire community. Yes, how about a round of applause for the students? And as we think about supporting our youth, and particularly our black youth, our Equity and Belonging Department is launching a micro-credential on the best teaching practices for our black youth. And this is an effort that we are partnering with Dr. Joe Johnson, who has been with San Diego State University and INCUS, the National Center for Urban Student, I believe it's Student Teaching? School Transformation, thank you. Who just authored a book titled, "When Black Students Excel." And our students here are certainly excelling. And we know we have to do better for students who have historically been marginalized, and I'm looking forward to this. And paying attention to the importance of learning as a district, and we know that professional growth is important, we are going to be providing an opportunity for 100 of our educators who are interested to really participate in a book study, and who are interested in honing their craft, and will continue to design opportunities for collective learning by all of our staff, so that we can better ourselves to better our young people. So, thank you for this evening, and I wish everyone a Happy Valentine's Day, and a day of love. Welcome, and with love. And that is my report this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. So we are now going to move on to our board reports, and I know we have some special guests this evening who are joining us, who kind of quietly filed in. Do you want to start first, Dr. Righters Payne?
I will start first. I will start first. Welcome, welcome, and thank you all for being here this evening. Before I get to Lincoln High School, I just want to thank trustees and everyone else who showed up for Crawford High School on Wednesday at their ribbon cutting. I think all of the board members were there, and I do appreciate your support for one of my schools. But tonight, we're here to recognize, to support my school, Lincoln High School. Let's give them a round of applause. And some folks would say, wow, this happened a long time ago, and you're just recognizing it. Well, there was a little dance I had to play as president, and now, as trustee of District E, I can just be the trustee for District E. And I want to say that this is Black History Month. And while we have others on the team, I want my celebration, my recognition to be for the students on the team, the football team. So if you all could stand right now so that everyone could see who you are from Lincoln High School. All right, let's give them a standing ovation, yes. Thank you. Now, I want to talk about them for a couple of minutes, because Cody, you gave me your time, right? You gave me your time. So, I want them to understand, and I want others to understand why I'm recognizing them. And I want to start with the coach, Coach Dunn, David Dunn. If every group of children in San Diego Unified had someone to work with them like he does his students, then no other district, no other group of children, no other group of students would be behind in this district. Because he gives it his all. He gives everything he has. He's concerned about the students. I know they don't want to be called children now, but your mother and father will always call you their children. So, he gives them everything that he has. He ensures that they practice well, that they academically. Someone told me that he's there poring over all of their grades, transcripts, to be sure they have what they need, putting it in place. And it's not only that. This is a piece that I really want all of you to hear. Coach gets the message that it's not only for right now at Lincoln High School, it's for beyond and the future. He plans for them to go on to college and into the NFL, or wherever else they want to go. He sees the future in every child. He sees the placement of where each child is to be. And we all talk about it. I'm a math teacher. But what do you see for that child? Do you see the ability to be an engineer, and you do everything you can to help that child? That's the whole picture. These students don't know how blessed they are to have someone who cares about them. And if there are some things, folks say, well, it's not all about the sports, it's about academics too. But he needs the support of the math teacher, the English teachers, to help him to accomplish his goals. He's working on it. And Coach, I just want you to know that I get the picture. And I salute you, and I wish that you could spread throughout this district, shedding that message of support for your students, because that's what it's about for all of us. She's not the only one doing it. I know that Coach Jeff, and I can't remember Jeff's last name, does it for... Harper, yes, he does it for basketball, and other coaches are doing it. But that's what it takes, folks. I don't care what you're teaching, what you're doing in the district, you have to see students as students, as people, as someone who will go through your class, and the next class, and the next class, and when they graduate, they will go on to college, or to the military, or to this, or that, or whatever it is, and see them in the future as productive citizens. That's what we're about. That's why we're here. And I know I'm preaching, I'm giving a sermon tonight. But that's all I want to say about it. Does anybody else want to say anything?
Congratulations. I think certainly, winning the state championship and being on top says a great deal about who you are and how you go about your business. But I agree. Coach Dunn, thank you for ensuring that our students are seen, that they're heard, that they're treated with respect, and standing up for something that matters. And thank you, students and our athletes, for representing our entire community, so that we are the light that folks need to see. And yes, I can say, I grew up in the same community, and unfortunately, I went to Claremont. No disrespect, Fletch, he's here. But whenever I see that the hive green, man, it just gives me chills. And thank you for wearing it with pride. And thank you for following your coaches and representing your community, your family. You represent all of us. And I can tell you, it gives me great pride to sit here as a superintendent and see myself in each of you as athletes, but as people. Thank you so very much. I'm proud of you.
And we do want a picture. Does anyone else have any, want to say anything? I was just going to share that my husband's a football guy, right? And he helps out with the high school football teams in the school district. But he wanted to watch the game, and we missed the game on the night that you guys played the final. And we knew you'd already won, and he's like, let's watch the game. And I was like, oh, because I don't really like to watch football that much. I watched your game, and I was, like, from the minute it started, it was so exciting. And I know you had a whole season, and you have such an amazing team, but just that little part, and that you guys never gave up, and it was so exciting. And, you know, that I watched all the way to the end. I mean, it was all the way. It was back and forth, back and forth. And I was just so impressed. And, I mean, I know that it goes deep. That was just one game, and you guys have been planning for that for much longer. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of you, to all of you, for your hard work and your commitment. And I could tell that you were not, you know, you were just going to keep it going. Like, you know, you were keeping that energy going to the end. And it was just amazing to watch, and would like to congratulate you as well. Thank you.
I just want to say, really quickly, thank you. The game and just everything was really amazing. I think that was one of the first times where I really felt, I think there's so, that the game and CIF just kind of brought the entire school district together. I think it highlighted the power that southeast San Diego has. I remember I had a watch party with my friends with each and every one of those games, and all screaming at the TV. I think in every moment of every game that I watched, I wanted so, so bad to be a hornet. So, thank you so much.
All right, are you ready for a picture?
We're ready for pictures. I just want to also say, I want a sports academy at Lincoln, because, you know, you've got medicine and all these other things. It's not all about sports. It's about helping sports out and so forth. So I've talked to Coach Dunn and principal, and we just have to make it work HR-wise and superintendent-wise. Yes, I know, I didn't say that, okay. All right.
Hold it again real quick. Yeah, got to get all you guys in there. And sadly, we got to do it one more time, because I can't see Stephanie. All you can see is this. There we go. There we go, that works. That's better, do it again, guys, there we go.
Coach Dunn, as the students are leaving, Coach Dunn? Coach Dunn? Are you able to step, can you step to the podium real quick while the students are leaving? Can you give us a sense of where some of the seniors are going off to college next year?
Yes, first of all, thank you guys for recognizing us. We truly appreciate it. Hardfall season. Our kids competed very well, not only on the field, but also in the classroom. So, very excited for these young men. As of right now, we have Roderick Robinson, who is the number one running back in the state of California. He's already attending Georgia University. Josiah Cox, who was one of the top defensive players in the city. He's also attending, he's off at Arizona State University. My guys that's here with me right now, we have Chris Veewell here in the middle. He'll be attending San Diego State University. We have Mr. Jaden Bright Smith right here, who's still undecided, but right now, he just picked up his, was it 10th? He picked up his 10th offer to go off to college. So we're trying to figure out where he's going to end up. We also have Chris White here, who will be attending Yale University. It goes on, we have Charlie Hines, who will be attending Brown University. You guys got to help me out, we got a lot here. We have Cory Thompson, who will be attending UNLV. We have Hunter Wiggins, who will be attending New Mexico. We have DJ Peavy, who's also graduated early and will be attending full scholarship at USC. Logan Moore, offensive lineman, will be attending Alabama Birmingham on full scholarship. Our quarterback... Our quarterback, KJ Chatham, will be attending Black Hill State on scholarship. As well as Adrian Charagoloff will be attending Black Hill State on, on full scholarship. And we also have Raylon Logan, who's also deciding where he's going to end up. And who? And Josh Carroll. So, we have 11 that's signed so far and two that is undecided. And that gives us a total of 63 football scholarships in five and a half years. And most importantly, most importantly is that as we continue to push our kids to compete, because I heard you, I heard you guys speak up about, you know, we just kept going back and forth and competing and competing. We understand how, you know, being raised in Southeast San Diego and playing in the inner city, we not only represent Lincoln High School, you know, we represent, the kids represent their, their neighborhood, their coaches, their administration, which I want to speak very highly on, the administration who had, had our backs so much. I mean, our principals were there through thick and thin, even almost got us penalties on the field. But they supported us. They've supported us so much. I also want to acknowledge my wife here, Kishana Christopher, for stepping up and helping behind the scenes. She does so much for our kids. Helping with, helping, helping, helping write for scholarships and apply for every, for everything that's, even outside of football. It's not just football. Our goal is if we maintain above a 3.0 GPA, that we all are going off to college somewhere. And that's what we've been maintaining. Our team GPA is a 3.19 and I'm extremely proud of that. So, it's just a good testament that, that these young men are buying into the system and they're working hard every day and they're competing not only on the field, but they're also competing in the classroom. And that's what's most important. So, if we continue to do that, we will continue to have success. Thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you so much again for being here. And thank you to Dr. Whiters Payne for coordinating this. Oh, we got one more, one more.
One, one second. This is so important. We need a new field. Our field is absolutely horrible. So, I just had to throw that out there because no track meets in five years and down the field. We have to get a new field. Everybody write that down. New field for Lincoln.
All right. All right. You heard it here, folks.
Now, we know the real reason Dr. Whiters Payne brought you here.
We've seen this act before.
Yep. Okay. All right. Well, I don't know how to get any higher than that, but we have some more board reports to do. Yeah. So, let's, yeah. And sorry, we've, we are, some of us are going over our two-minute time limit just a little tonight. Marty's not super happy about that. All right. Let's start with the students. Leah, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, President Bazo. On February 1st, I also attended the Black History Month Flag Raising, which as Dr. Lamont Jackson mentioned, was led by students across San Diego Unified. It was a beautiful event. The program consisted of empowering music, speeches, and poetry made possible by students who courageously shared their stories and experiences as black youth. Last week, I also had the incredible opportunity to moderate the post-performance discussion and contribute to the concert program of the Black Iris Project. Jeremy so generously invited 500 SDUSD students and staff to attend the show free of cost. And yesterday, I attended the Student Equity Ambassador's Goals Presentation. I was on the Student Equity Ambassadors last year and the group is doing some incredible work. Some of their focuses this year include gender empowerment, menstrual equity, and accessibility, as well as student voice and student resources.
Thank you, Trustee Nepomucino. And now we have Trustee Cotoriano.
Thank you. I'll keep it short. It's hard to top that wonderful presentation. But yeah, first, on February 1st, I had a wonderful opportunity to attend the flag raising. But again, Leah has already talked about that. We recently had our, a student advisory board meeting where we talked about the role that school bathrooms play and, and how to make sure they're accessible to all students. We also talked a little bit about the issues and the causes of chronic absenteeism and trying to look at new innovative ways forward with that. I've done a lot of work learning about counseling, honors classes, articulation, that has been incredibly helpful. And I look forward to learning more and, and bringing some reform to the system. It's been a wonderful few weeks, again, with the Black Iris Project. It was an amazing, amazing show. A huge thank you to Jeremy, especially for his generosity in donating those 500 tickets. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cotoriano. And I guess we'll continue down with the Trustee Pedersen.
Agreed to cede my time and have got more than taken, so.
You sacrificed for the greater good. Let's go to Trustee Barera. Yes. He's not going to the hive. And then we have Vice President Hazen.
Thank you. And I'm going to go a little bit off. It's Valentine's Day. I'm feeling the love. And I just, I'm inspired by and excited by what we saw with our Lincoln students. And I know that it took a lot of love, a lot of heart from parents and families and coaches. Really takes a village to create this amazing group of students that we just saw before us. And so, I'm excited about what they've done this year and I know what will continue to happen at that school. I also want to express my gratitude for the work of our superintendent and our leadership team, who I have just seen over the last two months to be steadfast and relentless in your commitment to building a transparent system rooted in trust where each and every student can thrive. So, I want to thank you for listening, sharing feedback, being open, honest, and unapologetic in re-centering the work of this district around students and families, and particularly those that we have all too often underestimated and under-invested in. So, really, thank you. And it's heartening to see instructional leaders and educators coming together with clear eyes to answer tough questions and figure out how we can do things like improving reading outcomes. And I'm grateful that work has begun with early childhood educators to co-create a TK experience guided by the developmental needs of our four-year-olds. And our goal can't just be to be the first district to serve all four-year-olds, but really to actually implement the very best UTK program. And while I'm on my Valentine's Day kick, I will really thank each of my fellow trustees and our student board members. It's an honor to serve alongside all of you because I know how much we all care about meaningfully and measurably improving outcomes for kids. And then one last thing I did want to touch on because it keeps coming up as I'm out in the community, talking to parents and schools. This thing that keeps coming up is the availability of after-school care in our elementary schools. And I've heard from many working families who are struggling. And when I say struggling, underline, exclamation point, struggling to balance work and caring for their kids in the afternoon. Last week, I heard from a single dad who couldn't get his son into primetime and has to pick him up in the middle of his workday and as a result, lost a good-paying job in construction. And told me he is now months behind on his rent. He's facing homelessness because he doesn't have access to after-school. And this isn't just one person. I hear so many stories like this. And I think as we look to the future, I'm hoping that we can support families by providing more after-school slots because it's a really big challenge for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hazen. And for my report, I actually have a video. And this is in honor, actually, of President's Day coming up. I think we have another special guest in the audience, Mr. Fletcher from Claremont High School. And apparently, he goes by Fletch, I'm told. And someone up here had him as a either teacher, tutor, or something. Yeah, yeah. Back in the day, we won't say what year. Yeah, he's a chieftain.
It was just last year.
It was just last year. Okay, yes. Yeah.
Wow. Apparently a Hornet now. Well, I'm one of the OGs, so you can't get rid of me like that.
Yes, you're, he's all, he's all. So, I think we're going to show that video now.
It's not always easy to make history come alive, but Claremont High School teacher Jim Fletcher has managed to do it. From Washington to Wilson, the Roosevelts to Reagan, and the Bushes to Biden. All 46 U.S. presidents are represented in this comprehensive collection that any museum would be proud to display. And for students and staff at Claremont High School, it's right on campus.
Buying things is the, the rough part, but we get stuff donated every year.
No other school in the country has a larger assortment. In fact, it's the biggest collection of its kind anywhere west of the Mississippi. Most of the items are from presidential campaigns, but some come straight from the administrations.
I've been collecting since I was really a kid.
Fletcher's first item was a Richard Nixon campaign button he was given at the Republican headquarters in San Diego. From there, collecting presidential memorabilia became his mission. It continued into his professional life when he began teaching history at Claremont High School.
It's better if the history comes to the table in flames because kids don't eat cold history food.
Fletcher started bringing in pieces to help underscore his lessons. As his collection continued to mushroom, his students had a suggestion. Start a museum. As a group, that's exactly what they did.
Collectors and dealers from all over the country really give us things. Hundreds of thousands of buttons some years.
Fletcher has also purchased many of the items himself, as has the Claremont High School Foundation he helped set up. The rest, he's got in the old-fashioned way. Beg, borrow, and deal.
If there are a bunch of duplicates or a bunch of stuff that we can't use, I trade it to other collectors. And we do a trade that we call mud for gold. And I get a little pile of good stuff for five or six boxes of eh, stuff.
Two rooms on campus displayed just a fraction of the more than 40,000 items. The rest is packed away in storage because of a lack of space.
As much as we have here, a lot of students don't know all about it, especially like the small museum room. I didn't know about that. I'm a senior. I didn't know about that room until this year. With my first experience in that, it's, I would like other students to have that experience seeing it for the first time, too.
To better get the word out, Marley made a new website for the collection and has helped put together presidential displays.
Working so closely with, with everything here is definitely, it feels like it's, it's something special, you know? Like, you know that not everyone gets to see like history to this extent. And also to be able to work with it and put it together for other people to see, I think that's definitely one of the exciting aspects of working in the museum is just putting these things together so that other people are able to experience it.
You think that's the sign?
Oh, no. It's the exact sign because it all came in a lot. These photos, the dress, and the sign.
Wow.
All came in an auction lot.
Look at that.
Baby, that's the sign.
About two-thirds of the collection belongs to the Claremont Foundation. The rest is Fletcher's, who says he's happy to keep it displayed at the school permanently.
It's never going to have any other home except this one because I'm married and I plan to stay married. So, the collection's going to stay here.
The collection is impressive, both for its variety and volume. But it sparks more than just curiosity. It serves an educational purpose, too.
If you have something material that's 100 years old, 50 years old, with high school kids, 25 years old is old. If you have that in the classroom, they respond to it.
In the future, Fletcher would like to introduce the collection to other schools through a mobile exhibit.
We would love, love to take this on the road on a bus. We would like to refurb a bus and maybe a school bus would be kind of cool. And put a tenth of the collection and go to elementary schools, really on a, kind of a daily basis. That would be an ideal way to share it.
Until the collection comes to you, you can come to it. Contact Claremont High School to set up a free tour. Just don't do it on President's Day when it's officially closed.
We have any comments from board members? Absolutely. Yes, we'll do a picture. I just want to let anyone say anything, want to share. I have seen, I got a chance to glance at the collection, I think last year, the principal at the time was Ethan Williams. And he, and I would, could have spent hours in there geeking out at all this stuff because I love that kind of history. And so, thank you for your energy and your time putting this together. And I'd love to, to be able to expand it, well, not expand the collection. I think you have enough stuff, but, but expand the education to other students and other schools. But yes, that was a fantastic video and I can't take credit for it, even though it was under my board report. But thank you so much for being here.
Maybe we can get one of those buses that we give away at the end of the year and use it. You know, the buses we sent, oh, I'm sorry.
So far, we got a football field, a bus, it, yep.
They're old buses, though. We give them away. We give them away, right?
All right. Do we want to take one more quick picture, Mr. Fletcher? Just wanted to give a quick shout-out to our communications team who put together that amazing video. They did a, you could tell they spent a lot of work on it. And thank you, guys. It was very impressive. Okay. We'll now consider item E1, the second reading and approval of revised 2023-24 Title I Eligibility Ranking for San Diego Unified School District. Superintendent Jackson, please introduce the item.
Thank you. President Bazo and the board, this is the second reading of this item. And just as a reminder, And just as a reminder, these funds are additional funds to support students who meet the criteria of 40% and above in terms of free and reduced lunch. You may remember when we presented on January 24th, a dollar amount. The good news, based on your feedback and the additional time, we were able to collect additional forms. And we continue to find ways to collect forms and find new ways as we go into the new school year because we're always working to get better and not leave any money on the table. And so you will see a shift from the 18.6 million to 19.4 million. So these are additional dollars that go into the schools that were eligible. And so no changes to the schools, but you will see additional dollars for some schools. And so I want to thank staff for that, and we invite you to take this item up for a vote.
I move for approval.
Second.
Approve by Dr. Waiters Payne, second by Trustee Barrera. Yes.
You know, as part of the efforts to improve our collection of forms, I know one of the things that Superintendent Jackson is all, we've got best practices right here in our district. So a few of us visited Horton Elementary last week, where the clerk is, 99% of families have returned forms in one of the most stressed, you know, school communities in our district. So I think to the extent that we can get the voice of the people at the schools who are making this happen, you know, as part of our learning how to get better as a district, we've got some great success stories out there.
We do, and Dr. Bagulai knows, working with staff, our secondary team, and our data team, with Tom's team, just to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make it as easy and as efficient for families and for staff to bring in more forms. And so, you know, I'm going to suggest our percentage is going to go up even higher as we go into next year. And that means more money and more support for our students. As Vice President Hazen said, we need to be unapologetic for helping our students who have historically been marginalized. And we know that our Black students and our Brown students and students of poverty have really struggled to meet the needs. And so, again, these are supplemental, so we can't supplant, and that's a critical piece to this. And thank you to the board for believing in that vision, that the students who need it will receive it. And we'll continue to find ways to support schools that are not meeting the threshold from general fund dollars and thinking about new ways to make sure that all of our schools get what they need to support our students using data.
Yep, Trustee Hazen.
I just want to echo how great it is to see that since we last saw this, that 1,000, almost 1,000 more forms have been collected. I would ask if we can let families know, thank them for turning in these forms, because I don't think collectively families recognize that we're talking about nearly $20 million coming into the district as a result of them completing these forms. So if we can do that, even better.
That's a great suggestion.
Any other comments or going to go to a vote? So we'll start with the students. Trustee Nipomassino.
Aye.
Trustee Cotoriano.
Aye.
All others? Okay, and that motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to item E2, which is approval of the 23-24 Title I Supplemental Allocations Report. Superintendent Jackson, please introduce the item.
And again, this is another report that's back-to-back on the heels of the previous item in terms of E1. So again, this is a report that allows additional dollars, as I said, to be allocated to eligible school sites. And it was about four years ago when we decided to change the way in which we were doing our work and make a shift to directly tie to the Title I site budgets to provide school-site councils the authority to provide the services that are unique to the school sites. And again, that's in direct response to us believing that the decision-making process should be at the school site. They should know the students by name, by strength, by need, and be able to identify the supports. We were just at Horton, and what a great presentation that Danielle provided to us, knowing what the students needed, having both quantitative and qualitative data, talking to staff, talking about their needs, talking about the needs of the staff who support the students, and really a direct ask, and having a solution. We have to believe that our site leaders are able to do that work, and they're able to push us to think differently about how we support them. And that's what is so awesome about this board and the clear vision. So again, the funds are allocated to be used based on some determining factors like the number of English learners, chronic absenteeism, homeless, low-performing students, many of them who are African-American, and also students who are receiving mental health services. So again, the dollars go directly to support our students who need it the most. And we continue to have the conversations to make sure that we stay firm on that vision.
I just want to say thank you to Trustee Barrera, to Superintendent Chief of Staff, and Bruce Bevins for joining me at the site. Was it a deputy? I'm calling chief. Yes, they both were there, you're right, and a deputy. Mix of titles here. But I want to thank you all for going out and for us as a team looking at what the issues are at that school so that we can offer more individualized service to help that student systemically and not just from the perspective of one trustee or from one area superintendent, but collectively. I just want to thank you for joining me in that visit. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have a motion on E2? Okay, motion by Trustee Barrera, second by Dr. Waiters Payne. And I think we're going to start with the students. Trustee Cotoriano.
Aye.
Trustee Nipomassino.
Aye.
Hey, everyone else? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, move on to, okay, we're now up to item E3, which is an update on LCAP Goal Number One. It's our mental health. Superintendent Jackson, please introduce the item.
Thank you. Sorry about that, I was making a note for thank-you notes to our families. Let me capture that. Yes, at this time, I would ask staff to come forward. I know Nicole DeWitt will be coming forward, and also Brooke Wegner, a senior from Patrick Henry High School, please join us. And we can slide another chair on the dais here. Come on up. And they'll be providing an update on the progress on LCAP Goal Number One, cultivating inclusive anti-racial and restorative schools, classrooms, and the district with an emphasis on mental health. So this will be an update. And thank you, Nicole, for joining us. And thank you, Brooke, as well. And one of the things that I do want to mention and ask the board to think about and also give us feedback on is, as we think about the services provided to our students, how can we ensure that we are making the investment and also getting the impact on our students with the investments? And we know that we've made progress. We also are aware that we have work to do. And so I'm appreciative of staff of celebrating the work that we're doing, but also leaning into the work that we have yet to do. And very excited, very proud of the culture that we are creating around this, to tell the story where we are and to really think about the data and where we need to be. So with that, Dr. DeWitt.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jackson. So thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on LCAP Goal One specifically for our mental health and wellness services. So we'll be focusing our presentation tonight on this multi-tiered system of support, looking at our Tier One, which are universal supports, Tier Two, which are more intensive supports, and then our Tier Three, which are really our crisis supports. I do want to recognize that back in '21-'22, we did dedicate an additional $30 million to provide more services for our students that were on top of the baseline services that we've had within our district for several years. So as Dr. Jackson mentioned, we do want to make sure that we're monitoring our progress as we implement these new services. So annually, we provide an update during our LCAP Board Workshop using the California Healthy Kids Survey and the information that we get from our students, our staff, and our families. But as the year goes on, we also do use monthly metrics. So every month, we actually look at the number of counseling contacts that counselors are having with students around the three pillars of a comprehensive school counseling program. So we do ask our counselors to log what kind of interaction they had with students, whether it was related to academic, social, emotional, or college and career. In addition, we also monitor the number of mental health referrals for these new partnerships, how many we're seeing at every school site and within every cluster, and then also the number of suicide risk assessments that are completed by each individual school. So we do monitor that monthly to assess the needs of our different schools and our different clusters. And then in addition, we do use real-time data through the use of our Who Knew It data platform to look at daily suspension rates, to look at our number of expulsions, as well as our absenteeism rates. So those are all data points that we look at ongoing throughout the school year when we're assessing the impact and needs of our services. So as I mentioned, one of the main annual indicators that we look at is our California Healthy Kids Survey. So here, you're going to see our most recent data metrics, which is actually from the '21-'22 school year. And this one in particular is for our elementary students. We administer this survey actually right now. So we're in the process of collecting our survey data for the '22-'23 school year, and then we typically get the results at the end of May, early June. So we do have them in time for our LCAP Board Workshop to present what that data looks like. So for the '21-'22 school year, you can see particularly for elementary that we are missing the mark. When we take a look at school connectedness, we are just right at the state average, but then when we look at caring relationships, as well as social-emotional learning supports, we're actually below the state average, which is that yellow bar there. So we knew that we had a lot of work to do going into the '22-'23 school year. And so on the next slide, you're going to see the different services that we've actually put into place for this current school year. So in particular, for our Tier One Universal Supports, we received a grant from the County Office of Education to develop model learning activities for grade-level-appropriate activities UTK through 12 in the strands of mental, emotional, and social health, as well as nutrition and physical activity. So we're actually working alongside some of our educators to determine what those model learning activities would be for each grade level. And then we have actually expanded our Leader and Me and Second Step programs. So I'm proud to say that every single one of our elementary schools has access to the Second Step program. And as we mentioned in previous board presentations, we do identify 50 focus schools to participate in the Leader and Me program, and that's a multi-year partnership, so that by the end of our four-year partnership, all schools will have an opportunity to be part of that Leader and Me program. And then for our Tier Two supports, we're really looking at our counselors leading small-group lessons, and those small-group lessons can be around social skill development, coping strategies. And then all of our counselors actually got together cluster by cluster and developed these amazing cluster resource maps. And these resource maps are actually resources that are within the community on a range of different topics, whether it's food security, housing, mental health, actual physical health services. So they got together to map that out for their individual clusters and are in the process of sharing that with their communities. And then for our Tier Three supports, what we were seeing prior to the '21-'22 school year is there really was a gap in services for students that were not medical-eligible or had therapeutic services within their IEP. So our focus in bringing more partnerships onto our sites was to really make sure that all students have access to onsite mental health services. So currently, you can see the numbers here. For just this current fall, September 2022 through January 2023, there has been a total of 689 referrals, UTK through five, that have been submitted for these mental health providers. And of those 689, 334 are currently utilizing those services. We do have 226 that are pending, so have yet to receive services, and 129 cases that are closed. The closed cases are a combination of students who didn't feel they needed the services, so they declined the services, or cases where the therapist met with the student multiple times and the student no longer needs the service. So on the next slide here, you can see our next steps. Based off of the data points that were just shared on the previous slide, we are developing those model learning activities. So our next step is, how do we roll that out to our school sites? So we'll be providing training to educators who would like to use the model learning activities within their classrooms, and then also identifying data points to measure the impact of those model learning activities. And then again, we'll continue to add more focus schools for the Leader and Me program for the next several years. 50 more will be added for the '23-'24 school year. And then we continue to provide ongoing training and support to our counselors to implement those Second Step SEL lessons. So currently, our elementary counselors are implementing 20- to 30-minute lessons to every single grade level per week at the elementary school sites. And then the last piece really goes back to that number of referrals versus the number of students being served. That pending number is really something that we're focusing on. We need to get underneath why those are pending, and a lot of times, it has to do with consent forms. Because these are therapeutic services, we do need to get active consent from parents in order for the students to be able to meet. Over like, what's the barrier? What's the challenge for returning those consent forms? And how can we kind of revise some of our processes and the referral chain in order to really increase the amount of consent forms we're getting and do that at more of a rapid pace? And then our next slide here is our middle school program. This is actually a new report that WestEd provided us through the California Healthy Kids Survey. It's only available for the middle and high school levels, but it's specifically to the mental health indicators. The questions that ask those are really tough ones about how folks are feeling in regards to their mental health. So you can see here for our middle school students that we're performing right about the state average for the percent of students expressing feelings of chronic sadness, a little bit above for considering suicide. And then there isn't a state average indicated, but you can see that it has gone up a couple percentage points for students feeling social and emotional distress. We do see similar trends in our high school data as well. We see a little bit less of students at the high school level experiencing chronic sadness, but we do see, you know, a slight increase for those considering suicide, and then a little bit higher of numbers for the percent of students experiencing social and emotional distress. So again, based off that data that was presented in the Healthy Kids Survey, these are some of the services that we've put into place for the '22-'23 school year. We actually hired a district intervention counselor whose sole purpose is to focus on suicide prevention and awareness. And so in partnership with our SWARE Committee, who had put together some mental health education lessons, we were able to curate a couple of weeks full of mental health education lessons that she actually goes out to the individual school sites to deliver, but then also makes herself available to meet with students who may be triggered by some of the information in the lesson. She's there to provide that social and emotional support after the lessons are delivered. And then she also is assisting counselors with updating their procedures on the suicide risk assessment, or what we refer to as EP10. In addition, we have two partnerships, one with Mending Matters and another with the JED Foundation, who are partnering with our high schools to do a comprehensive needs assessment, to assess the mental health and wellness services at our high school campuses so that we can understand where are gaps and how can we improve. And then again, similar to elementary with our Tier Two, we're really focused on our counselors providing those small-group social-emotional supports when we're talking about coping skills, as well as grief support, and then connecting our families with those community resource maps. But we've also launched a peer counseling program. So this is in partnership with Mending Matters. It's called a life program, and currently, it's at eight of our high school sites. And so they actually have students that serve as interns, life advisors, that collect data from the student population to see what are some of the struggles around mental health and wellness that the students are having. And then they create lessons and activities and after-school programming to help educate students about that, but are also available as peer counseling support as part of that program. And then you can see here for our Tier Three, we do have slightly higher numbers of referrals for our middle and high school students. We have about 1,300 referrals for grade six through 12, and almost 600 students that are currently six hundred students that are currently utilizing those onsite mental health services. So again, we realize there's a lot more work to do, and so the next step with our partnership with both the JED and Mending Matters organizations is to take the information from their needs assessment and work alongside them to strengthen those services at the individual school sites. We're also happy to announce that we were just awarded a contract with County BHS to be part of their screening to care initiative, which will actually provide a mental health screener to our middle schools. And the middle schools will, there'll be a care coordinator that's assigned to the middle schools that will actually decipher the data that's associated with the screener, and then we'll be able to either provide those Tier Two social, emotional support groups or do a warm handoff to those Tier Three therapeutic services. We also are continuing to train up our counselors on how to support the social, emotional needs of our students, so we've already hosted several trainings in collaboration with Rady Children's Hospital and Elizabeth Hospice, particularly when we're talking about coping skills and grief support. And then like I mentioned, we want to continue to do family outreach, really understand what are those barriers for our families to access those services and provide opportunities for them to either fill those consent forms out, you know, on the spot. How do we make that a more streamlined process so we can get the students into the services that they need? So our next section here is really going to transition into our wellness programs and our focus on wellness. In particular, this slide is looking at our school-based health centers, our wellness centers, and our Healthy Start Centers. So our school-based health centers are a more holistic approach to health. So not only do they include behavioral health, but also well-child exams, dental checkups, primary care visits, et cetera. And you can see the sites that currently have those school-based health centers, and we're close to almost six thousand visits so far in those school-based health centers. And then in addition, at three of our high schools, we host school wellness centers, and those wellness centers do provide a lot of behavioral, as well as social, emotional supports for students that are in need of that. And then for our Healthy Start sites, you can see several of our sites listed here. Healthy Start sites are really in partnership with several of our community partners who help to connect families and students to needed services within the community. So those services, again, could be related to transportation, it could be related to housing, it could be related to physical or mental health, but you can see the number of interactions so far that we've had with our families and our students at those Healthy Start sites. And then our next slide here actually speaks to what Doyle was sharing with us earlier. So you heard a lot about the Student Wellness Ambassador Program and their wellness program at Doyle. That is all part of our healthy school programming. So we do ask sites to indicate a school wellness coordinator at each school site. That actually will build a team to assess the school wellness and identify areas for improvement. These wellness coordinators do receive monthly professional learning from our district nursing and wellness department, and eighty-eight percent of our school wellness coordinators have reported an increase in awareness of resources by being part of that professional learning. You can see here, we have over a thousand members in our school wellness committees and more than four hundred student wellness ambassadors district-wide. And currently, what we're in the process of doing is actually finishing the annual Thriving Schools Integrated Assessment, which is the measurement tool that we use to measure school wellness programs. So you can see the graph here shows the data to date. We do give schools until the end of March to complete that, so you can see there's kind of a big chunk that says unanswered because we still have some schools that are finishing up that assessment, but we should have that information by the end of March. And then besides our schools, we also need to focus on our employee wellness. And so you can see our employee wellness efforts here. I'm very happy to report when we're looking at comparative numbers from 21-22 to 22-23, we already see a huge increase in the number of employees participating in the wellness activities that we have hosted either in person or online. We also have a very robust staff wellness website that gives employees resources in all of these different categories. And so our next steps really is to figure out a way to survey the overall well-being of our employees, and we want to monitor the impact in what we're referencing as the five essential elements of well-being. We're actually looking at those five essential elements that have been created by Gallup, and those elements are associated with career, community, financial, physical, and social well-being. So we're hoping to launch an employees' well-being survey by the end of this current school year for our baseline data, so that way, in the subsequent years, we can measure the impact of the events and the services for our employee wellness programs. So I'm going to transition a little bit to services that we've had in place actually for several years within the district. So some of the services are related to our drug, alcohol, and vaping prevention programs. We have been part of the TUPA Tobacco Use Prevention Education Grant for the past three years. We're in year three of that cycle. We've also had a three-year partnership with the McAllister Organization to provide drug and alcohol education as an alternative to suspension program. So instead of students being suspended for drug or alcohol use on campus, they would be offered an opportunity to participate in these education classes that McAllister offers in addition to our School Link providers. So our School Link providers are the ones that have primarily served our Medi-Cal students, but they do have teen recovery centers that are hosted at several of our school sites where students can, again, participate in these programs as an alternative to suspension. And so if you take a look here on this next slide, you can see some of the impacts that we're seeing from these programs. So when we're looking at the California Healthy Kids Survey data, we can see that in our middle and high schools, there's actually a larger percentage of students reporting that there is no substance use at their school, or they do not view that substance use is an issue compared to the state average. But I think the data that I'm most proud to report on is really the suspension and non-suspension rates that are on the following slide. So here you can see in the school year of nineteen twenty, this was prior to entering into those partnerships, and the number of times that a student served a suspension for possession of drugs or alcohol versus a non-suspension. You can see that the out-of-school suspensions were significantly higher, but over the years, as we've had these programs in place, you can see that those numbers are evening out. And so far this year, for the 22-23 school year, it is about a fifty-fifty even split for the number of students serving a non-suspension or an alternative to suspension versus an out-of-school suspension. And then when you look at our tobacco rates, you can see an even bigger impact where we had, you know, far more students being suspended in nineteen twenty for the use of tobacco versus in twenty-two, twenty-three, where so far this year, we've had a hundred and seventeen students serving a non-suspension or a site-based intervention program versus the thirty-four that have served an out-of-school suspension. So we are trending in the right direction when it comes to that. And so the last piece that I would like to lift up is really a partnership that we had with our district student equity ambassadors, where we hosted a fentanyl awareness webinar back in December for our families to really lift up this crisis that we're seeing as far as fentanyl poisoning, and want to make sure that our families are aware of the resources. So with me today is Brooke Winger, who was one of the moderators of this webinar, so I'm going to ask her to speak a little bit about her experience with that.
So hi, my name is Brooke Winger. I'm a senior at Patrick Henry High School, and I've been a Mental Health Committee member of the Student Equity Ambassadors Association and collaborator with SWARE, another student-led district organization, for two and a half years. I was, I received the honor of helping put together one of the very first district-led virtual What I Wish My Parents Knew forums on burnout with SWARE in the spring of twenty twenty-two, and more recently, the fentanyl awareness forum that, as you all know, took place on December sixth of twenty twenty-two. My two mental health committee team members, Clementine Maunu and Aleah Julian, and I were responsible for opening and closing the fentanyl forum, introducing and transitioning between each speaker, and regulating the Q and A session towards the end, which included sorting out the questions already answered by experts and the unanswered ones. I'd also like to take the time to thank the several panelists involved with a shout-out to the tremendous effort that they put into this, including Shayna and Gaff of the Josh Gaffin Foundation, Cindy Capriani, the Senior Management Counsel and Outreach Director for the U.S. Eternity, Amy Neville of the Alexander Neville Foundation, Dr. Tarris of the San Diego Unified School District, Sam Chapman, Dr. Bergman of the San Diego Unified School District, or San Diego County Behavioral Health Services, and Dr. Clark of Adolescens. With all the work that we put into this forum and all the intelligent panelists who spoke, I expected that we would be impacting hundreds of people who turn up to listen, but little did I and my team members know, and if it's safe to assume all the rest of the leaders, that we were to be impacted just as greatly, if not more so. Coming into the presentation and listening to the preparation meetings, I thought I knew everything about fentanyl, its uses, its commonalities, and its dangers. But it's one thing to be informed of an issue and another to grasp the severity and reality of a very present danger, which is, in my teenage opinion, a very, very hard thing for most presentations to accomplish. But that's exactly what this forum did, and quite frankly, what any forum has the potential of doing. It transformed important information into real, relatable, and identifiable information. The parent testimonials of children lost to fentanyl stimulated shock and tears as they described the common sentiment that no one ever thinks this one bad thing, any bad thing like fentanyl addiction, can happen to them or their children until it does. The expert's ability to answer concerned staff and parents' questions transformed dire data into real-life problem-solving and caring advice. And lastly, the Q and A session itself even allowed the viewers to respond to each other's questions, convey sympathy, and offer up better ways to bring this epidemic to an end. In short, this forum was beyond effective. The positive feedback can attest to that, and I don't see how any one person could not have benefited from it, even I who previously had no connection to any parent, staff, or student involved with fentanyl. It gave perspective on how precious young life is and how a simple webinar can be the beginning of a community uprising against something threatening our future generations. Tragedy was the reason behind this forum. The loss of lives united us, and this forum was the safe haven in the midst of a raging war where we could take a step back, conversationalize, and consider next steps of prevention. To be brutally honest, I originally said yes to this forum because a part of me wanted this on college applications, like a lot of high schoolers hoping to receive a greater education would consider. But now, given the opportunity to be part of another forum, I would say yes even if told I wasn't allowed to put this in an application, because witnessing strong people, like the parents who lost children to this drug, and have the courage to stand up and communicate for what is right changed me. Feeling a bigger part of a crucial initiative and conversation that brought me out of my head and into the world changed me. Also, like, it changed two of my closest friends who I fought to get to watch the forum. I learned more of myself, my community, and what I was willing to do to help protect my loved ones who may be at risk for fentanyl exposure or any drug exposure. That's why in closing, I'd also hope that students could be a really big part of creating district-wide forums in the future, because forums don't just inform, they transform. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brooke, and thank you so much for all your hard work moderating that forum. It was a very emotional event for everyone who participated, so really appreciate your support, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you to both of you for being here. Okay, board members, you have any comments? Trustee Pedersen.
Oh, thank you. I have a couple of quick questions. I guess the preliminary question is on Slide eight that has this, I think it's Slide eight, has this thirty-nine, is that a percent? Thirty-nine percent of respondents are experiencing chronic sadness?
Yes.
Wow, that's a startling statistic. It means more than one out of every three kids in a classroom is experiencing chronic sadnesses. That's like a wake-up call for me when I, I mean, I have kids in elementary school, but I, it's still, that's startling to me. And, and I would say in relation to that, and this is a broader question, I see a lot of amazing interventions here. One of the questions that I have constituents ask most and parents ask most and community members ask most is what's happening on, in terms of staffing, in terms of FTEs on this? Counselors that are dedicated to, psychological counselors and not just career counselors, school psychologists, behavioral specialists, have we seen what, obviously, we're going into negotiations, that'll be a separate conversation, but have we seen from 2019 to 2022, have we seen an increase? Are we experiencing a shortage? Do we have vacant FTEs? I mean, so just a little bit about what's happening in terms of staffing.
Yeah, absolutely, happy to answer that. So I will say we have to be very creative, because all schools across the nation are facing these same types of issues and concerns. And so we can't just rely on one position to be able to help fill this need. So we really have to provide like a spectrum of services at our school sites. So during the pandemic, we did commit to ensuring that an elementary counselor would not be at more than two school sites. There were some elementary counselors previously that were traveling to three school sites or four school sites within a single week. So we did commit to elementary counselors being at only two school sites at maximum. So that did increase the number of counseling services by one or two days a week at a particular elementary site. And then in regarding our secondary counselors, we did commit to rounding partial counselors up to make them a full position. So in the past, we have had partial counselor assignments where we have only, you know, a fifty percent counselor or a forty percent counselor, and so during the pandemic, we did commit to rounding that up to be whole counselor positions to help provide more of the social, emotional support. And then in addition, as far as the therapeutic services, we do contract with seven different community-based organizations to provide that therapy. So in total, we have about forty-three community-based clinicians right now that are serving our schools, UTK through twelve, to provide those Tier Three crisis supports.
Just a clarification on the language there. You said we committed on the two maximum schools for elementary and we rounded up whole, we committed to rounding up whole. Did we, in fact, round up whole when we, we actually hired, hired the appropriate?
Yes.
We were able to, to, to contract those?
Yes, exactly. I mean, the one thing that's always a struggle, you know, there's always things that happen during the school year, right? Someone may have to go out on medical leave or maternity leave or family leave, and so it is challenging to fill those mid-year vacancies, and so that is, that is a tough part. But our Human Resources Department does a great job recruiting on the front end so that we can be fully staffed when we open up the school year. The struggle really does come when we have mid-year vacancies.
Anyone else? Trustee Nipponcino?
Firstly, thank you so much, Nicole and Brooke, for that presentation. I really appreciate how thorough it was, and especially having a student representing on this board is awesome. And for the small group, Tier Two, and community supports, I was especially curious as to what peer counseling programs look like in action.
Yeah, absolutely. So that is in reference to the Mending Matters Life Program that I spoke about, where they actually do recruit student advisors that are representative of the diversity of their campus, and then they work with those student advisors to do a needs assessment to determine, like, what are the mental health needs and concerns of a campus? And they actually work with a licensed clinician to develop mental health education lessons that they can deliver after school, but then they're also trained by the clinician to act as a peer counselor and make themselves available for that counseling support, mainly after-school programming so that we're not pulling students from academic courses, but they do offer that as a service.
I think Trustee Barrera is next.
Yeah, first of all, Brooke, thank you so much for that, for that presentation, and yeah, I think you brought to life how powerful, you know, that, you know, that, that event had to add to what it's been. So thank you for sharing that with us. And then Nicole, this incredibly comprehensive report, very much appreciated, and we've talked a lot about what are the key indicators, you know, we're looking at. I wonder, as you're thinking about all of the things, you know, that we're doing, particularly on the mental health side, if you were to identify a few of them that you would say we need to bring those to scale over the next three years, which of those strategies would you identify? And I don't mean to put you on the, on the spot, but...
No, it's a great question. I think one of the things that we're really trying to get underneath right now is when it's appropriate to refer a student to therapy. And so I think right now, what we're uncovering, and this kind of goes to the pending case numbers that we saw, is that not every student needs therapy. Sometimes a student just needs a friend, sometimes a student needs a mentor, sometimes they just need that caring adult on campus. So how are we developing a continuum of support? And how are we working collectively as a school-based team to determine, like, what is the appropriate avenue for a referral? So that's something that we're working on right now in collaboration with our counselors. It's almost like a flow chart, for lack of a better term, on, you know, when you're seeing a student and based on what the student's reporting, like, what the appropriate referral would be, because we do want to maximize that. So I just think it's more about putting the systems and structures in place in order to maximize the supports that we have on campus, so that way we can thoroughly measure the impact, because right now, I think, you know, given, you know, coming out of the pandemic and, and the trauma, not only... the trauma, not only that our children have felt, but that our staff has felt, a lot of times, we do make a lot of referrals to folks, because we're just not able, in the moment, to really take on what it may mean to, like, sit down and really get to the root of the issue. And so, establishing some of those systems and structures, I think, is just critical.
Yeah, and I would add to that, and thank you, Brooke, and I appreciate your facilitation. I know this is critically important, the discussion of fentanyl, and I appreciate Gaff and him being able to tell his story. It was important, and it's important for us going forward to continue to expand. I would add to your question. I was speaking with Family Support Today, Norma, and she said, "Would you be surprised if I told you there are so many different, unique circumstances for our students?"
Right.
And I think that's the important piece, is knowing what the intake looks like, knowing that all of us need to work together, so we're not duplicating, and that we're actually responding to the individual needs of students.
Yeah.
And she says, as she visits homes and speaks to students, she's, it's hard to find two cases that are alike. And I appreciate, Nicole, what you're sharing is, we have to get better at identifying that. And then, what she said is, and then, how do I get my information from the home, from the student, to the service? And so, I think that's going to be critical, as Nicole just mentioned. So, I guess I would agree. I'm not sure that I could say there are few strategies, but the process, I think that's what we need to pay attention to, is really identifying students, as we have said, many of our target students, that we all know their names, that we all know their needs, and that we can actually document the information and the service that we're rendering and the impact. I think that's when we're going to really start to see the outcomes that we desire.
Dr. White-Hirshpin?
I'm glad about this discussion that you're having concerning this. Thank you, because I think we've all learned about fentanyl, and that was a tough task for you to take on, dealing with that. My concern right now is middle school. And I think maybe everybody on this diet is, because, well, I shouldn't say it that way, but when we're in closed session, we see, we see the middle school children. We see the middle school students. And I'm sure the teachers are seeing them every day. Principals are seeing them every day. And it's almost like they're disconnected from reality, almost. I think we were going along before the pandemic, and we were, we were winning the battle a little bit, but now, I think, post-pandemic, we've just outright lost the battle. And I know you guys are struggling with that, in terms of services and how to deal with it. And I think you've pointed out, the way to do it is to perhaps look at that continuum to see how we can address it. Is it beyond just, I was always asking for the after-school sports or whatever. We had a parent to say, parents, a group of parents to say, "Don't just put the kids in one after-school, and you just have one team. Put them all in sports. Let them all run around and do whatever, and then bring them back together." But I don't know. Do you feel like you're getting a handle on it, or what's, what's your take on it?
So, I, as I mentioned, I'm really excited for this opportunity to partner with County BHS on this new screening-to-care initiative, because this will actually be data-driven. So, using a universal mental health screener, it's very short. It's like 10 questions. It would take a student maybe three to four minutes to complete it. But actually, having a care coordinator that's looking at that data and deciphering the data to say, "Okay, here's the Tier II students that are in need of support groups. We're going to create those support groups to help them with the particular skill sets that they need help with. And then, here's the Tier III students. How do I, as a care coordinator, do a warm handoff to our clinicians that are already available on our school sites, or through School Link, or through the community, to make sure that they're getting those services?" So, how that initiative is working is that we're actually rotating it through all of our middle schools. So, all of our middle schools will be able to be part of this program. We are doing it in small cohorts, but they will all be able to be part of the program over the next two years.
Do we need active consent?
We will need active consent for the mental health screener, because it does drill down to the individual student, which is different from the Healthy Kids Survey, which is an anonymous survey.
Trustee Hazen?
Yes. Thank you both, Brooke, for the work that you've done, and Nicole, for sharing with us. I have a couple of questions, particularly about our investments in all of these services. We're doing a lot of things, and I think Trustee Barrera sort of got to where my head is, which is, which of these things are having the most impact? And I recognize, for some of these things, these are newer investments, and it's hard to know. I'm wondering, because I'm new, so I heard you say we had, there was a new $30 million investment in '21-'22. Were those new one-time dollars, or, just so that I have the context?
Yeah, absolutely. So, that $30 million commitment was utilizing our SR3 COVID relief funds. So, we did dedicate that amount starting in '21-'22, and through the term of the SR3 funds, which goes through '23-'24.
Okay, thank you. And I'm wondering, so we're, you mentioned Leader and Me, Second Step, were those some of the new things? And do we have, it's a challenge for me, is knowing, I know we're doing it. The question is, is it working, or how is it working? That's harder for me to ascertain.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So, prior to the '21-'22 school year, we did not have Second Step in all of our elementary schools. So, if elementary schools chose to purchase the program, they had it as part of their school site. And so, what we did is, we did utilize funding to make sure that every single elementary school has access to the Second Step curriculum, and that was actually rolled out towards the end of the past school year in '21-'22. So, this school year is really the first school year where all elementary counselors have had access to that curriculum, and the expectation is that they are delivering those 20- to 30-minute lessons each week to every single grade level. So, our hope is that in this next administration of the Healthy Kids Survey, which we're in right now, that we will see that impact in that social-emotional learning strand for elementary.
Okay. Yeah.
Nicole, just a little more specific, did, were we able to, or did we look at the difference between the outcomes for schools that had Second Step versus schools that didn't?
So, we haven't disaggregated the data yet down to that level. That is something that we'll be looking at, particularly with our Leader and Me program, because that is something that's being slowly rolled out. It's 50 focus schools per school year. So, we will be able to take a look at, like, the schools that have participated in Leader and Me, and what their Healthy Kids Survey data is looking at versus the ones that have not.
I think that's important. I think that's, Vice President Hazen, I think that's what you're alluding to, is when we make a decision to say we're going to expand, what are the data points that we have to suggest that this is the investment we have to make? And if not, you know, how do we make those modifications?
Right, right. And I think while we hope we continue to have the same level of funding we have today, if that's not the case, the more information we can have about which of these programs are really making a difference in the lives of students would be really, really helpful. And I think, you know, as I look at the data on high school and middle school students, right, these indicators, presumably, some of the things you're describing, we were doing in 2022, and not in 2018 or 2019, and, yes, we had the pandemic in between, and it was serious, but the numbers have remained the same. And so, I'm, the more you can help us understand which of these things are really helping students, all the better. And I guess the other thing for me is, and I think Sharon's been talking, Trustee White-Hirshpin's been talking about sort of individual schools and knowing, you know, individual students, are these numbers consistent across all sites? Are there, so as we look at the different mental health indicators, is it pretty consistent? Trustee Pedersen talked about chronic sadness, 39% of students experiencing chronic sadness. Is that all students, or are there certain subpopulations that we need to be paying particular attention to? And for me, it's about, as we think about, we just adopted, you know, Title I allocations for priority populations. Is it primarily students within those schools or not? So, I just have a lot of questions about how the dollars are making a difference.
Yeah, absolutely. So, going back to the Leader and Me program, I did want to point out that we originally piloted that program during our first robust summer experience. And so, we did track social-emotional growth of our students during the first time that we utilized the Leader and Me program as part of our summer program, and we did see that growth for students who participated in summer. And so, that is why we dedicated another contract and more funding to onboard 50 more schools each year, because we did see that improvement for the students that participated in the summer program versus the students that did not. So, it is a data point that we do have access to for that partnership. And then, in regards to the California Healthy Kids Survey, we, as a district, are able to drill down and disaggregate that data, not just by school, but also student group. And those student groups can be by ethnic group, or they can also be by gender or sexual orientation. So, we are able to drill down to that specificity for each of our school sites, and our school site counselors and site admins have received training on how to drill down into that data within their California Healthy Kids Survey, so that we can be much more specific and targeted in what our services are.
And I, one quick last one, which is, so as you talk about referrals to therapy, I'm wondering, is there any way for us to be able to evaluate the outcomes of those therapy services in a HIPAA-compliant way, so that we know if they're making a difference?
That is a challenge, because of the confidentiality piece. We actually, due to that confidentiality, do not track student demographic data in the referrals, because there is a level of HIPAA compliance there. So, what we're trying to do is actually dive a little bit deeper on those closed case numbers, and asking our providers to get more specific on, like, how many of those closed cases were students that denied services? And starting to drill down on, like, why they denied services versus how many of them are closed cases because they actually finished a therapy program?
Terrific.
So, we have asked for that specificity in the future.
Thank you. And also, thank you for the great work with the Resource Map. I think that's going to be a huge value add to a lot of our school communities.
Just one clarification on counseling, because we had this discussion earlier. I think the way, unless it's changed in the last few years, the counselors at the elementary level do things differently from the secondary counselors. Secondaries are programmers, schedulers, a lot of them. They have a large caseload, and they just schedule kids, students for the next semester of next year. Versus the elementary, they definitely do the kind of counseling that you're talking about, small groups, working with students, and issues generically. I know, you don't want to talk about it now, but...
No, I don't mind. We're talking, we're having, so...
Okay. But, I mean, that's been one of the complaints that, it's a good thing you're going to take a look at counseling functions, because when you say a high school has three counselors or whatever, they're, they're not doing the same kind of work that the counselors are doing at the elementary level. The elementary, they're not programming, because teachers get together and do the power placements, or whatever they call it. I'm missing the term on that. Yes, but they actually work with students to deal with issues other than programming.
I would say, Dr. White-Hirshpin, what we're trying to focus on is a UTK through 12 comprehensive counseling program. That's aligned to the ASCA pillars, where we do ask all of our counseling teams to develop goals around those three pillars to better serve their students. So, every counseling team is asked to develop an academic goal, a social-emotional goal, and a college and career goal. Because we're also seeing, you know, yes, at the elementary level, the counselor contacts and the logs that we're entering are very heavy on social-emotional, but elementary still needs college and career, and they still need academics. Those conversations have to start young, right? And so, it's really shifting that narrative as well, like, we need to offer a comprehensive counseling program, not just, this is what you get in elementary, and this is what you get in high school. So, that's really been the focus of the ongoing training and support for our counselors.
What kind of progress? What kind of progress?
Anyone else?
We're getting there.
Okay, Trustee Cattoriano?
I just want to first say, like, thank you for this comprehensive report. I know counseling is something that's really important to the student body. And I just had a couple of questions about, you know, you mentioned how there's a way of tracking when counselors see students and for what reason, and how that effective that is. And I'm just wondering, like, we have data to see, to see the mental health crisis, and so, is the, is the data about who is having mental health issues matching up with the supports that we're offering? Like, are the counselors actually seeing the people that they need to see, enough people that they need to see? And is that data lining up?
That's a great question. That kind of goes back to that systems and structures piece, in really utilizing our counselors as, for lack of a better term, our first line of defense. So, what is that intake process? There really should be, you know, if a student's experiencing a social-emotional crisis or a mental health crisis, a contact with a counselor, for the counselor to assess, like, is this something that I am, as a counselor, am able to handle with the student, or do they need more intensive support, and I need to refer to therapy? So, that's something that we're working on right now, like, establishing that system and structure of what an ideal intake process could look like, so that we're utilizing our services to their utmost impact.
Right, right. That's awesome to hear. Is, when you say, I guess, first point of contact, I guess my only concern is, like, is that first point of contact actually happening with the demographics that it needs to happen with?
You know, I think that goes back to what the data analysis is at the school site level, right? Because I think that's where it's most powerful. Like, what are we doing as school site teams to regularly look at student data, whether it's the Healthy Kids Survey data, whether it's, you know, the amount of students that frequently come up to the office, the students that are, you know, chronically 20 minutes late? Like, how are we coming together as a school site team to look at all of those data points to determine, like, what type of outreach and support needs to happen with those students that may not be coming into the counseling center? And so, it really goes back to the systems and structures piece, and how we're utilizing the expertise of all of our teammates to support our students.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I'm just wondering, at the end of the day, is the counseling that needs to happen, is that first point of contact where a student is referred to or talks to a counselor, is that actually happening? I think that's a concern that I and a lot of other students share, and I'm just wondering, like, is, is the first point of contact actually happening? Because, you know, I see all these wonderful, again, like, $30 million investments, and in making sure we have quality counseling, but, you know, a lot of that quality counseling may not reach the student at the end if they never have that first point of contact. So, can you just say, generally, I know it's hard, like, is, are the numbers lining up? Is it more specific?
So, like I mentioned before, we do monitor log entries and the types of contacts that our counselors are having, the number and frequency. So, if we're seeing that there is a low number of contacts that are happening at a school site, we do have a district counseling team that will reach out to support those counselors and help to provide, like, any additional training, like, maybe the person doesn't feel comfortable running support groups, because they have not done it in the past. So, what kind of training and support can we provide you? As I mentioned, you know, Children's Rady has been a great partner, as well as Elizabeth Hospice, providing, like, very targeted training on the social-emotional supports when it comes to grief, counseling, and coping skills. And so, it's just a matter of us monitoring those numbers and those interactions, and doing proactive outreach to our counselors to see what it is that they need to provide more services to students. But I also want to say that not every student may feel that a counselor is a trusted adult, and that's okay, too, because sometimes your trusted adult can be a classroom teacher, or it can be a site administrator. It could be a custodian. It could be a paraprofessional. There's lots of different trusted adults that can be that first point of contact. So, it's really on us to educate, what does that intake process look like for anyone who may have an interaction with the students, that we can make sure we're connecting them with the right supports.
Thank you so much for all of that. It was really helpful. I had one other note. Can you talk a little bit more about the rollout and the impact of high school wellness centers? I know they're a huge new program, and I just want to kind of learn more about them. I know they're a huge new program, and I just want to kind of learn more about them.
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, we do have three high school wellness centers. And so I actually have been speaking with the wellness coordinators just to kind of understand more of the trends that they're seeing of the students needing support in the wellness centers themselves. So primarily, our wellness centers do provide those Tier Two and Tier Three behavioral health services. So if you, you know, if you're experiencing a very stressful day, coming into the wellness center and engaging in some calming activities, learning about different coping strategies, that's also a safe space for our clinicians to meet privately and confidentially with students. So we are currently meeting with our wellness center coordinators to determine the data metrics that they would like to track for their individual school sites on the impacts of their programming, because it is going to vary site to site depending on the student population.
Awesome, thank you. And then, when you say there's only, you know, three schools, is this kind of looking at a pilot program over the next five years? Are we looking to expand it? Are we looking to only keep it at those three schools?
So our, the dream, right, Richard? The dream would be that every child at every school has access to both physical and mental health services. And so that's our goal. So do we think that there will be other opportunities for schools to have things like wellness centers? Yes. But again, our wellness centers are focused a lot on mental and behavioral health. We also need to consider the physical health of our students. So that may be expanding our school-based health centers. It may be expanding more of our Healthy Start programs. So it's, again, having that flexibility and those options to really meet with school sites and determine what those needs are. I'm super excited to see what happens with our community schools. And, you know, launching that first cohort and adding more community schools each year over the next several years with one of those focus areas. What kind of best practices and strategies can we learn from them to roll this out more broadly?
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry, you guys must be getting exhausted. So I've got a little bit of a, kind of a think big, and, you know, this is something that's long-term. But I think one of the things that we've been consistently limited by, just in public schools, when we're, you know, thinking about what are the outcomes that are most important for us to pay attention to, is I think we're limited by the, what, the tools that are currently available. So for instance, on the academic side, are once-a-year test scores the best tool to measure growth in students' literacy or math? You know, and I think probably most of the, I think you, Nicole, I think you, Lamont, I think most educators would say, no, there's better tools. I think when it comes to measuring some of these incredibly important social emotional issues, school connectedness, caring relationships, social emotional supports, kind of on the positive side, and then on the, you know, more difficult side, chronic sadness, suicide, social and emotional distress. I think if we were to start a conversation with the community of people doing psychology research, I think what they'd probably tell us is that surveys are a very limited way of measuring growth around these issues. But we know we've got the California Healthy Kids Survey, it exists. I'm wondering if, as part of the work that we do in getting better and better at measuring impact, which is a lot of what Trustee Hazen is getting at, if we could start some conversations with some of our academic partners, our university partners, what's a better way, you know, to measure some of these things? You know, and, and how do we roll out, you know, some of that ability to take the best of the research that's out there, you know, around some, again, you know, some of these, you know, social and emotional, mental health issues? How do we take the best of the research that's out there and start to apply it, you know, in our school settings? And I would imagine that there would be some pretty eager folks in universities to partner with public schools to apply, you know, sort of cutting-edge, you know, research techniques to help us do that. So, yeah, I guess it's just, you know, maybe it's just an encouragement to start some of those conversations with some of our universities. Because I think that the tools that we're using now, not just on social and emotional health and mental health, but also on academics, are prob, there's probably better tools out there, you know, that if we were to, you know, start these conversations, we might be able to take advantage of.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to jump in and just say, we just have to be careful in terms of the measurement. Because if we're not aligned with the measurements that come out and that are public, then we might say, oh, we're doing great because we're using this. But then the measurement comes out and says something different. So I agree with you, and I jotted all of these questions for us to take back. And I know the team is also grabbing the questions. But it is, it is something that we recognize, not all the data, the quantitative data correlates to the qualitative data, and that's why it has to be a mixed methods approach, particularly when we're talking about the needs of our students. So each of you are spot on, and so thank you.
I think we have to do that for uniformity and baseline and all of that. But everybody knows that if you take the same survey over and over again, I mean, it becomes meaningless. So these students are probably looking at it the same way. Same questions, I mean, just meaningless. But I think you're on to something because when I was at Cal State U.S.A. Marcos, and I had like, 20 students who were, who had to do thesis for special education. And they would sit down with me at the beginning of the semester, and we'd talk about, what do you want to do for your thesis?
Yeah.
And I think this is something that we would talk about methodology, approaches, et cetera. For somebody who is supervising on masters and doctoral students, this would be an excellent way for them to at least do a case study or two with some interviews. And just, there has to be a way. I'm not sure if San Diego State would be willing, but I know when I was at CSUSM, that was my big thing every semester, to meet with the students and figure out some issue that school district had that we could do research on to at least crack the nut of just the same old data. Because you have those quantifiable data that are required by the state. But then, we need to go beyond that to really find out what's going on. So, excellent suggestion.
Thank you both. And I just wanted to also finish by saying that Nicole recently, at the last Miramisa Cluster Meeting, discussed some of this material. And it was the most highly attended cluster meeting I've been to in years. And people that had missed it were like, oh, I missed the, I wanted to be there, mental health talk. So it was, you could tell that, you know, both parents and, you know, staff members. So I, so that made me, right there, realize, you know, they're definitely, you know, of interest and something of concern in our community. One thing that came up from parents, I don't know that we've discussed here as much, was how do I identify, like, if I, if my student's having an issue, where do I go? And I'm assuming it's like, you know, they'll need to go to the school and the principal, because the different schools have different programs. But that came up from several of the parents, is, you know, if I'm seeing something and I'm concerned, who do I go to? You know, so thinking about, and I know you are thinking about that, but making sure the parents kind of have some, some way of, or some resources that are easily accessible for them as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think one of the great resources that we have for San Diego County is 211. So that is available for any family, for any student to use, where they can actually speak to somebody live to talk about what their concerns are, and that individual will help link them to resources or services within San Diego County that they can access. So it is something that's, that just launched within the past year. So we're really trying to get the word out because that is available 24/7, as well as the CalHope hotline that the state has put together. So there are some resources that in the moment, a parent can utilize even if the school's not open, right? Because sometimes things happen at the weekend or in the evening that are readily accessible that we just need to make sure our parents are aware of.
Is it on our webpage? And parents and counselors are telling those that?
So we are putting the cluster resource maps, the one that I spoke about earlier. That's one way that we're getting the word out about the resources. But for the hotlines that are available, county and with the state, we are putting together a one-page document with QR codes, phone numbers, messaging that school sites will be able to post on their individual websites, and will also be able to print out as flyers that they could put inside the school or in enrollment packets. So we're working on those right now and piloting it in the Canyon Hills and Crawford clusters to get feedback, like, is this really accessible? Does this work? Does it not work? So that way, we can develop them for every cluster.
And also, I wanted to share that I went to the, what I wish my parents knew forum that they had at Claremont High School. I know they've done it a few, and it was very moving. And it was all student-led, they had some experts from the county, public health experts as well, but the students were really leading that. And I spoke with the school police that was there, and he said Fentonel was like, the scariest thing they've ever seen. And, you know, and that just, to me, that, you know, stuck with me that, wow, this is really is a, you know, a huge issue. And so I'm, thank you for being here and bringing that to the forefront as well, so. All right. All right, we are now considering the Board Consent Agenda Items F1, Approval of Minutes, Regular Meetings and Special Meetings, and F2, Adoption of Resolution in the Matter of Recognizing February 1st through 7th, 2023 as Gun Violence Survivors Week. Item F3 has been withdrawn from the agenda. Is there, is there a motion on Items F1 and F2? Sublift. Okay, motion in a second from Trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne and Trustee Nepomassino. And should we vote?
I think we've got some.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have speakers, yes. My brain's a little fried. Yes, we have some speakers. Let's see, I think we're going to start with Lori Van Orden. Thank you for being patient.
My name's Lori Van Orden. I'm a retired SDUSD teacher, a current volunteer with the District Wellness Council, and a board member of San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention. And I'm here tonight to thank the board, the superintendent, and the district for your continuing leadership in promoting the reduction of gun violence. Five years ago today on Valentine's Day, we saw the senseless murders of high school students and teachers in Parkland, Florida. We recently marked the 10th anniversary of the slaughter of first graders and school staff in Sandy Hook, Connecticut. And last night, the most recent heartbreaking news story comes out of Michigan with three college students gunned down and more injured. Story after story, loss and heartbreak due to guns. Let's not forget also the everyday toll of gun violence and suicide that disproportionately affects some communities and populations. Gun-related deaths have now overtaken auto accidents as the leading cause of death of children in the United States. So all of our efforts to protect our children and our communities are more important than ever. Since 2018, SDUSD has stepped forward to speak out against gun violence as an advocate for actions that can save lives. For example, providing information about gun violence restraining orders and about the responsibility of parents and adults to securely store guns, locked and unloaded, separate from ammunition. Tonight's resolution continues this campaign and also recognizes that further trauma-informed solutions are necessary to keep our kids and our schools safe. So on behalf of San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention in all of San Diego, I want to urge passage of tonight's resolution and to thank you again for continuing to address the epidemic of gun violence in a proactive way. Thank you.
Next, we have Therese Heimer. We, if we want to have Sophia Gilmore come up as well, and then she can go right afterwards?
Good evening. My name is Therese Heimer. I live in District D, and my children attended school in District C. I'm a volunteer board member with San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention. I thank the board for its focus on gun violence and its impact on the health and safety of students. How important, given the conversation you've all just had. I particularly applaud that this year's resolution focuses on trauma-informed solutions to increase safety in the schools. We know that the most impactful actions that schools can take are preventative measures, including building a safe and trusting school climate, and very importantly, creating strong threat assessment programs, which allow schools to intervene to address potential violent behavior. Every student who is well-known by the adults at the school and who feels safe talking to those adults and their peers is a student who can be prevented from resorting to gun violence. I urge the board to bring focused efforts to advance these initiatives in the coming year. Thank you.
Now, we have Sophia Gilmore.
Hello, my name is Sophia Gilmore, and I'm currently a senior at Canyon Hills High School. I'm here today to represent students across the San Diego County School District. I'm an advocate for gun violence prevention because I'm aware of our country's gun violence epidemic, especially in schools. One of your resolutions today is to implement school security upgrades. Others in this room, parents and even students, might think of this as complex security system installations, thinking schools already have the basics. But in my school, until last May, before I pushed administration to implement them, we couldn't even lock classroom doors from the inside. Let that settle in. It took students to come to administration to get locks inside our classrooms. This just proves how much, how needed this resolution is. Additionally, at my school, school shootings are rarely talked about, and even if it does get mentioned, after someone threatens to bring a gun to school, we can't even directly say what occurred. Students know what happens in America. Ignoring it won't make anyone feel safer. Instead, we need to start a conversation and include students when finding solutions. More needs to be done, and that's why we are here today, to protect our students, teachers, and staff, and to prevent more lives being lost at the hands of guns. Passing this resolution is the first step towards improving school safety, but there is still more work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you to our speakers. Do any of the board members have any additional comments? Dr., Trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
I just want to say I commend Sophia Gilmore. I think you did a workshop at SCPA. And we were, yes, we were there. Thank you for your work and your advocacy on to deal with this issue. Thank you.
Trustee Nepomassino?
Firstly, I'd like to especially thank San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention, the San Diego chapter of Team Enough, and Robert Shentrup and Chica Hamilton from Brady Team Enough, who provided very meaningful insight in the making of this resolution. SB 906, which would be further implemented by this resolution, develops integral content that informs parents and guardians of California's child access prevention laws and laws relating to safe storage of firearms. As mentioned by Lori, I do want to recognize that today is the anniversary of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas school shooting, and a reminder to all of us that we need to do better as a school district in protecting our schools for gun violence, and this is just a first step in doing so.
Thank you. Trustee Nepomassino. Trustee Barrera.
Yeah, thank you, President Barrera. I just want to thank and congratulate Trustee Nepomassino for your leadership on this issue, not just here in our district, but nationally. And this resolution reflects your leadership because what you're doing is, you're addressing this issue comprehensively. You're talking about, within schools, the physical protections, but as importantly, maybe even more importantly, you're talking about the education and the work that needs to happen around students feeling safe enough and having those relationships that they can bring. can bring to the attention, you know, of adults on the front end to prevent, you know, something before it happens. And as you never do, you don't shy away from the fact that there is absolutely no excuse in our society for these weapons to be out there. So, you're not, you know, doing what I think some people try to do, which is very cynical, which is to say, well, we need the mental health support, we need the work within schools, we even need to, you know, create more physical barriers within schools as an alternative to, you know, proper gun regulation. You're saying we need to do both and to even try to have a conversation that it's one versus the other is cynical. And so, you're coming at this, you know, in a comprehensive way. And again, I think your leadership, what we heard from Sophia tonight, just makes the Superintendent's point that we, as adults, really need to look to you to lead us, you know, towards finding solutions and our job is to, is to support you.
Trustee Couturiano?
Thank you. I just want to first, again, echo Trustee Barrera's points about your leadership and the great work that all these other groups are doing. Your leadership really inspires a lot of us and keeps us informed about this. I want to thank you also for your comments about looking to students and I just really like to agree. I think, I don't want to speak for every student, but I think every student has had that thought of, hey, what if something happened today? And the fact that that is a commonality is horrendous. And I think this is a great, great, huge step into, into, into stopping these conversations, into stopping these tragedies. I've also wanted to quickly speak about the withdrawal of F3. I was planning on speaking about it in my Board Information Report, but it was short. In short, what we were looking to do was there was an-
One second. Can I, can I get some direction on this? And I apologize that we didn't cover this. I just want to make sure we're good because the item was pulled and if we speak on it, is there a space where we can, where he can speak on this?
I think if he just wants to provide some simple and short comment, information only, that would be okay, but there can't be any real discussion and we shouldn't get into detail.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're in alignment.
We simply decided to pull it just because there was an aspect of community engagement that was missing and we're looking to just have more conversations. Thank you.
Trustee Hazen?
Yes, thank you and want to echo all of the feedback shared about Trustee Nepomassino and it's been great working with you on this. And I do want to just highlight the additions that were made to this resolution compared to past years. And I'm really proud that we were able to include specifics around trauma-informed solutions, making sure that the preventative work we are doing is not traumatizing students and that we're being thoughtful in the implementation of all of our programming to make sure that our schools are safe and making sure that we're avoiding practices that could inadvertently cause harm and traumatize students in an effort to try to keep them safer.
Thank you, Trustee Hazen. Anyone else?
Just one point. I want to thank, the reason I pointed out Sophia, because she talked about the fact that, Richard, you will remember this, we and, we asked staff about security after the Stoneman Douglas incident and we asked for every school to be analyzed. But when she said at the presentation that she thought about it as a student, so this is how valuable students are. She said that she thought about that folks can come in and you can't, I mean, she had them to look at the doors that we had not thought about. And I think as a result of that, Lee and his team took a look at all the classrooms to say, no, we don't want somebody able to come in, you got to open the door to see. And they fixed that problem and it should, that's why we need to have students on these assessments because they know what their fears are, to your point, that no one else had apparently even thought about, so.
Trustee Pedersen?
Thank you. If I could just say very briefly, I, just today, I met with a group of Bird Rock parents that reached out with security concerns, not, not specific to Bird Rock, but just in general, security concerns. This is one of the issues that comes up with parents, obviously perpetually, it's one of the most common things that comes up. And I think all of us here are committed, I always say, you know, we all as parents, I'm a parent of two Torrey Pines Elementary School students, and we, we always want our kids to come home having learned something, social, emotional, academic, but more than anything, we want them to come home. That's, you know, a million, infinitely more important is that they come home. And so, one of the things I'd like to say right now is in addition to, to recognizing Trustee Nepomassino and Hazen for bringing this, is to recognize San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention. I think it's a lesson to, to all constituents, parents who have issues that they care deeply about. It really is incredible when you look at what, how government changes, small groups of individuals who are absolutely dedicated to their cause and who show up again and again and talk to elected officials and do organizing and do events, it oftentimes seems very thankless, but in the end, you have an impact. And so, I want to thank San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention in particular.
Trustee Hazen?
Yes, and I'm glad that Trustee Whitehurst Payne brought up the security and safety audits, if you will. It would be helpful, I think, for me and maybe Trustee Pedersen, since we're new, if we could see a report on the results of safety and security audits so that we know what happened and what the findings of that was.
All right. Are we ready to vote? Okay, let's see, wait, did I, I had a motion on the floor? No?
We have a motion.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Nepomassino?
Aye.
Trustee Couturiano?
Aye.
Okay, everyone else? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, next, we have Item G2, which is the, thanks for coming out again, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, which is also called DELAC, Semi-Annual Update to the Board and Staff.
G1.
It says G2 on here, so.
Okay.
Okay.
G1, Marty?
G1?
Okay.
My mistake, G1.
Thank you.
And Staff Report, oh, Superintendent Jackson.
No.
Please present the item.
I'm good. I'm going to say welcome to staff in the DELAC.
Thank you so much, President Bazza, and welcome, Lalia, the Chair of our District's English Language, District English Learner Advisory Committee and Marissa Allen, our Instructional Support Officer of the Multilingual Education Department. Thank you for being here this evening and presenting. Good to see you.
Thank you. Just waiting for the slide deck to come up. Good evening, President Bazza, Superintendent Jackson, and Board Members. I am Marissa Allen, the Multilingual Education Department Officer, very proud officer of this department. And with me today, I have Lalia Ayali, our DELAC Chairperson, our Parliamentarian, Francisco, and I also have with us our Multilingual Education Department Administrators sitting right behind us as well. Tonight, you will hear from us in, for the very first time, in a combined presentation. We have been working very hard and together to make sure that we are bringing valuable information to our DELAC committee parents. And I'm going to go ahead and pass on part of the presentation to go over celebrations and highlights to Mr. Francisco Arceo. So, the next slide, I have the slide, I'm sorry. This is our agenda for tonight and although it seems short, we have a lot to go through. So, Francisco, do you want to get us started with celebrations and highlights?
Yes, of course. Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Francisco Arceo. I'm the DELAC Parliamentarian and parent of Valencia Park Elementary School. Lalia and I myself are volunteers of DELAC Executive Board Members. Our partnership with our district staff is valuable and I have enjoyed being part of this committee. We have been working together to create engaging sessions, our DELAC meetings, which over 100 attendees each session. I am happy to announce that it has been over six years since we had any parents' volunteers for ELAC liaisons. This year, we have two parents' volunteers, leaders, who have been elected to our DELAC Board. Our goal is to provide more leadership opportunities for parents to be involved in their children's education. They will be supporting schools' ELACs that have been high num, have high numbers in English learners who are chronically absent, parents outreach and training. In order to include student voices, we're working with San Diego State University Intern Lorna Ford and Student Services Department and to add student board members to our committee. Now, I will share some highlights. We're pleased to announce that our Chairperson, Lalia, meets monthly with our Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent to discuss recommendations and concern for multilingual learners. This is a dialogue and opportunity to work together to identify areas of improvements. Another highlight is the increase of functioning English Language Advisory Committee at our schools. Research says that parents' involvement is directly related to our students' success. This slide shows ELAC data from last spring when we presented our challenge to our parents to increase parents' participation in order to establish more ELAC committees. Our DELAC members provided ideas of how we could increase participation in schools and our district staff provided training, resources to the site coordinators and principals. Our current status shows that we have increased in the numbers of schools who have established an ELAC and fewer who have decided to delegate responsibilities to the school site council. We have 28 schools who are not required to have one and we are currently working with the six spending schools to establish their ELAC. During our last federal program monitoring review in December, the California Department of Education was very pleased with the level of knowledge and participation of parents have schools on the site ELAC committees. Now, you may ask, why are ELAC important? Our ELACs are important as part of a school community. They engage parents, staff together in meetings that needs of English learners. Some of the legal tasks involve looking at attendance, English learner progress, and reclassification data to determine priorities to support. Later in this presentation, we will acknowledge areas of growth. Now, Marita will talk about the way we're supporting our English learners in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Francisco. So, this, this slide that you see here is the current levels of support that we are providing to our English learners. We know that we have a moral imperative to make decisions based on equity and the Multilingual Education Department distributes our resources and supports based on the needs, the differentiated needs. Last week in particular, I want to point out that our entire leadership team met for our strategic planning sessions and we are currently in the process of looking at data to determine which actions are the ones that are making an impact on student outcomes and determining which ones are not so that we can adjust. Our goal as a district is to ensure that all students become proficient in English, thus reclassifying from, from English learner to fluent English proficient and no longer needing additional English support classes. Our district has twenty, a little over 2,200 students who are considered long-term English learners, which represents 14% of our English learner population, which is a little over 15,000 students, 15,856 students in our district. Long-term English learners are students who have not demonstrated proficiency in their English, although they've been attending school in the United States for over six years. This year, our district has been focused on providing supplemental support via our resource teachers that were strategically placed at sites with very high populations of long-term English learners. They provide small group instruction, student monitoring sessions, targeted interventions, and goal-setting, coupled with professional development for the teachers that are serving the needs of those long-term English learners. As I mentioned before, we are currently in the process of analyzing our data to determine the impact that our resource teachers are making on supporting our long-term English learner outcomes. We also have targeted professional development in our middle and high schools. Our teachers alongside our administrators and our area superintendents are receiving training on best practices for supporting our English learners. The trainings that have been provided this year were by the author of the curriculum that we adopted, that is, standards-aligned and research-based and it's the English 3D curriculum that is, that our students are exposed to. Integrating department efforts. At last month's board meeting, there was a presentation from our newly-established Equity and Belonging Division. They presented a strategic plan to address racism and discrimination, which is a concern that Lalia will be talking about in a minute. Our data demonstrates the need for integrating department efforts to meet the needs of our multilingual students. We are connecting with other central office departments to become active partners to ensure the focus on English learners are addressed in the planning, the professional development, and also in parent workshops. In response to input that was provided by our DELAC and site administrators, an additional allocation of general funds was provided to all school sites in our district based on the number of English learners at each site. This was to support an English language coordinator at each school. Their responsibilities include English learner monitoring, compliance, placement, LPAC testing, reclassification, biliteracy pathway seals, and ELAC community involvement. I want to thank our Superintendent and our Deputy Superintendent for their support and commitment in supporting the needs that are expressed by our school site leaders. Another tool that is available to our teachers and site administrators is the new Elevation Platform. I'm very excited about this platform, which allows us to triangulate data for our English learners to serve their needs. The data and reports provided in this platform will help our administrators share information regarding English learner progress with their ELAC committees at their school sites and during parent-teacher conferences. The platform provides an easy way to monitor progress and provides accountability for compliance tasks to better inform site administrators in supporting the needs to promote student As I mentioned before, our goal is to ensure that our students are reclassified from English learners to fluent English proficient. Elevation provides us with the data and the reports that allow teachers to track progress and provide interventions and plans to ensure our students are reclassifying. Data Quest shows that our district reclassification rate was at 9.6% compared to the statewide average of 6.9% for the 2020-21 school year. Once our students score a four, which is the top score on the LPAC assessment, and meet other criteria, they are eligible to reclassify, which is our ultimate goal for our English learners. I'm extremely happy to share that for the 2021-22 school year, we reclassified over 300. we reclassified over 3,800 students with a rate of reclassification of 24%. I'm extremely happy to report. And as of today, we have already reclassified over 1,000 students, 1,059 students using the data from the summative LPAC of 2022. We haven't even started LPAC testing yet, and we've already reclassified 1,059. We will continue to reclassify students after LPAC and through the summer to ensure that our students are placed in the appropriate classes and hopefully not having to take remedial English courses. Hopefully you have been able to attend any of those very special reclassification ceremonies at the school sites to really see how important and how special it is for our students to pass this milestone and for their families. They are amazing. Now I will go ahead and have Lalia, our DLEC chairperson, share with you some suggestions and concerns.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bazou, Board of Education Superintendent. My name is Lalia Alali, and I am the DLEC chair. Before starting my presentation, I would like to welcome the newly elected board members, Mr. Peterson and Ms. Hazen. Welcome to San Diego Unified Team. So as a DLEC chair, I'm here to give you a report that expresses the thought and opinion of the stakeholders I represent. So my first concern or suggestion is increase the funding to support English learners. As you may know, district scores from the recent Smarter Balanced Assessment State Standardized Test show decline for the English learners. Students in both English Language Arts and Math, so DLEC recommends more funds and resources at the site intended to be reserved for the English learners to succeed. Our focus will be more site staff on campus, extra training for teacher, and money going directly to schools. So the second concern that we have is the equity in serving the English learners. So with a limited number of English language instructional resource teachers and small group instruction in some schools only, DLEC is concerned about the services provided for the English learners. So DLEC recommends that San Diego Unified School District develops a new asset-based belief about multilingualism across the district, because our English learners, they come to the district speaking different languages. The second point, every English learner receives equitable resources, and every school in San Diego Unified receives the targeted professional development. The third point is about the suspension of Black and Latino. As you may see, there is an increase or high percent when it comes to the suspension of Black students and Latino and people of color. So DLEC recommends to expand restorative practices with the focus of strengthening relationship and connection between students, adult, student, student, and a school community. That leads me to talk about racism and discrimination that still exist. So I think it's a time, and this is the recommendation from our DLEC, to treat racism, discrimination, and Islamophobia and all aspects or forms of discrimination as a target for intervention. It's a time to look at discrimination as a real challenge so we can improve the school life of Black and people of color. The next point is the chronic absenteeism for English learners. According to California Dashboard 2022, about 39% of English learners are chronically absent, while about 29% of English-only students in San Diego Unified are chronically absent. So DLEC is very concerned about the English learners' chronic absenteeism and is looking for the district to take the following action. Solicite English learners' input on attendance expectation and share information about attendance in their preferred languages and communication methods. Two, set clear expectation and provide diverse ways to account for attendance. Three, establish cross-depart- departmental teams to develop, review and refine policies and practices to support our English learners. Establish attendance monitoring system and disaggregate the data by English learners' student groups to identify and respond to parents. Develop and implement plans to reengage our English learners who have missed a significant number of school days. My last point is the English learner graduation rate. DLEC is concerned about the decline in English learners' graduation rate. DLEC believes that the decrease in graduation is linked to the disparities in opportunity and achievement, so we recommend our Board of Education and our superintendent to improve the education services available to our English learners in K-12 school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Lalia, for your presentation. We also share the same concerns, and we recognize that there is so much work to do. The statewide chronic absenteeism rate more than doubled in 2020-21 to 22. This four-year comparison chart shows how the pandemic affected attendance, and in the red box, it shows our current reality. Post-pandemic, now that kids are back in school, setting a new baseline in chronic absenteeism. We have been working with our ELAC committees to engage families in the discussion about addressing the needs of our students who are struggling with attendance and also sharing ideas during our DLEC meetings. But this effort is not enough. It hasn't been enough. We need to be able to connect with each individual family, as it was mentioned earlier in the previous presentation, building those relationships that allow us to work towards solutions in an individualized manner. We know that that's what works to turn this around. Family service assistants were hired in each cluster to support a process that builds these relationships that I just talked about with families, and its foundation is to identify solutions to the barriers that each individual is encountering. We will be tracking data to determine if this will be an effective approach to improving outcomes for attendance. The Student Services Department will be providing more information on chronic absenteeism in a subsequent Board of Education meeting. As we get kids back into school, now that they're all back, we want to make sure that everybody graduates. The statewide four-year adjusted cohort graduation rates, as reported on DataQuest, is at an all-time high of 87%. San Diego Unified is above the state average with a graduation rate of 90.6% for all students. There is a gap between our English learners compared to all students. And to address this, we have established student-centered schedules whose guiding principles are access, inclusion, and targeted support. All students have access to broad and challenging coursework with high expectations for all. Our secondary, our secondary schools use strategic scheduling practices to increase access to honors, college career, and technical, and advanced placement. Formative real-time data is used to provide targeted and differentiated support to all students to build academic language skills needed to, in order to access the core, the rigorous core curriculum. In addition, the San Diego Unified has created a brand-new work group comprised of several educational partners, including one of our very own DLEC representatives to meet bi-weekly to discuss and design for a meaningful graduation. And progress of this work group will be shared during the March 14th board meeting. Today, you heard about our celebrations and areas of growth. You heard about how we have worked together as a DLEC parent committee in identifying problems of practice and taking recommended actions which have made a positive impact on our system to support our English learners. DLEC's purpose is more than just compliance-related tasks. When we listen to the concerns that are presented and also pay attention to the data, we are able to strengthen our partnership and connect with other key central office leaders to become active partners in the success of our multilingual learners. We invite you to join us in one of our DLEC meetings to learn more about the supports provided to our English learners. We want to thank you for allowing us this time to showcase our work together and wish you all a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you so much. I don't believe we have anyone public testimony on this. So I'm going to open it up to board members. Trustee Dr. Peterson.
It's a late night, but so very briefly, thank you very much. Good to see you again. And I just wanted to ask, I have a constituent who's been reaching out since before I was elected about district, translation of district communications and documents into multiple languages. And presumably, part of what helps to drive the discrepancy in attendance rates is a lack of effective communication with, with parents. Behind many English language learners are English language learner parents as well. And so what's DLEC advocating right now in terms of expanding? Obviously, we need to work on our website, period, not just in relation to translation, but...
I was going to say that, the website.
Website, yes. We need some translation. And also, I mean, one of the things I think is probably particularly hard as a parent, I can see, it's one thing at the district level to improve translation and into more languages and more comprehensive. I can imagine it's especially hard at the school site where you have a principal and staff who are putting these communications out, and it's, some of them are in very complex linguistic communities where there's a lot of different languages. It's hard to imagine them having the resources to get six different translations of things that are going out two or three times a week. So how, what does DLEC advocate in terms of, I mean, obviously, we can't get deeply into it, but at a broad level, what do they advocate in terms of translation services?
So when it comes to, when it comes to educating our ELACs at the site level, what DLEC has done, what our administrative team has done, is that we provided the resources to the site leaders, to the slide decks, for the information that is going to be presented in Spanish and in English, which is the language of, that most people request. When any of the school sites have parents that need translation services, they reach out to the translation services department to request those services, and they're readily available. Same thing with any documentation that principals are needed to, needing to push out to the sites. It's just a matter of them contacting that department to get those documents translated. In addition to that, we have a staff member on our team that is also, has also been working on translating most of the documents that we are sharing with school sites so that then it's easier on the site leader not having to do that.
The other thing we're doing, and I know Deputy Superintendent Dr. Bagula is working with the team, to get translation devices in the hands of our families and our students who, who need them to recognize all the languages, not just the language that the majority of folks. And so we're working on that as well to make that investment for our families.
There was another investment made on the pocket talks as well when we had the huge influx of refugees, and those were provided to sites so that they were able, so that they were on the spot, able to communicate in multiple languages with families.
Trustee Hazen?
I wanted to thank you and recognize that in terms of the data that you shared, Marisa, that you included target numbers. I love seeing where we're trying to go. So thank you, really appreciate knowing not just what's happening, but what's happening in the context of where we are trying to get to. So thank you for that. And I'm also wondering, sort of along those lines, I know we're celebrating the reclassification rates. I'm also wondering with that data, what the goal is? Do we have an annual goal in terms of that rate?
We'd love it to be 100% of eligible students. So when we currently look at our LPAC scores, the students that are, that are scoring a four on LPAC, that's the first criteria in reclassification. But not all of them are able to reclassify because they're not meeting all the other criteria. So our goal is to make sure that we're in the 90th percentile for reclassification, but we're not quite there. When we look at also the number of English learner students over 15,000 in our district, they're not, they're not all necessarily eligible for reclassification until they score that four on the LPAC assessment.
I see. It would be helpful, I think, when, because it sounds like you're coming back to us with that data. Maybe to have some of that nuance reflected would be, would be great.
And we'll be presenting to you those data points in May after the summative LPAC.
Thank you.
Trustee Dr. Whitersby?
Thank you. First of all, I want to commend you guys for being together. I love the team approach to it all. And having the superintendent and the deputy superintendent work, coming to meet with you is really a good thing. When we can all work together, it makes it much better. And yes, I have visited, I have been, attended some of those sessions, and I hope that all of my colleagues will get that opportunity because it's usually a big celebration when students are reclassified. So yes, thank you for coming and bringing a comprehensive report.
Jeanne Applemason?
Yes, thank you so much. And I have a brief question about chronic absenteeism for English learners. There's one point that you have that says, "Set clear expectations and provide diverse ways to account for attendance." What exactly do you envision as these diverse ways to account for attendance?
So when we're dissegregating data for our English learners and looking at that chronic absenteeism, it really goes back to the relationships. And so when you have conversations with families in determining what those barriers are, it really allows you to have an honest conversation about looking at alternatives for those families and making sure that we're getting those kids to school. When it comes to the committee and the presentation, the details of the chronic absenteeism plan, I'm, I'm, I'm really struggling to think about, right now, about the question that you're asking about the details of alternatives to attendance? Maybe I'm not understanding, and that's why I'm...
Correct, yes. Just the wording that you have on here of the diverse ways to consider what attendance looks like, that's what I'm looking for.
On slide number 25?
I think it's one of the slides that Lalia presented.
Is it Lalia's? Oh.
Yes. Pardon me, it's in Lalia's.
Sorry, that's why...
No worries.
Okay, I know what you're saying. On the recommendations that Lalia has, she's saying, she's recommending alternative ways. Did you want to address that?
No, so my idea is, since what we have now is not working in our district, so can we come up with new ways, looking at other maybe schools who have been also struggling with the same thing? Because one, one factor that led to that is the COVID. And this is, it's a national issue. So my idea is to look in other schools, to look, connect with other districts, and see what they have done, did it work? If what they have done worked, so can, we can borrow maybe their alternative and implement it in our district.
If I can, I think we're not talking about how we account, but how we support our students who are chronically absent. I think the language in here, but I think that's... I think the language in here, but I think that's what Lalia is referring to, is where we don't see chronic absenteeism for language learners, what's happening? And I believe Lalia would say, and I believe we would say, it's about connection, it's about relationships. But what she's asking is, let's look at some data, and where is this working? And we talk about that in terms of other things, in terms of academics, what's working, what's not working? And so I think that's what she's saying, is some diverse ways, not the accounting. Let's just be crystal clear. Okay? We're not cooking the books.
Thank you so much, Lalia. And I especially wanted to thank you for mentioning the racism and discrimination aspect, and how we can reconsider our approach as a school district. Additionally, Marissa, thank you, wonderful to see you again, especially as we're looking for a student representative on the D-LAC committee that is currently an English learner.
Trustee Rivera.
Thank you, President Plaza. Thank you so much, again, for the, the team report. It's always very helpful to hear the district and the committee coming, coming together around recommendations and around information. There's a couple of key data points here that we're not seeing trends over the past few years, which would be helpful. Francisco, you presented trends in the number of functioning ELACs at the schools, which is, thank you for, for giving us that, because it gives us a sense of how we're, how we're doing better. But a couple of the other data points that we've tried to look at, you know, for years now, reclassification rates is one. So we're seeing that we did better than the state, but how are we doing compared to where we've been over the past few years? And I know this is hard because COVID, but you know, if we can go back pre-COVID and then see, you know, see where we're at, that would be helpful. As well as the number of long-term English learners, the total number. So we see that that number is 2,000 some, you know, some odd today. I think it was 8,000, you know, 10 years ago, we had the higher overall enrollment, but I think that number has come down. But it would be interesting to see over the past few years, just before COVID and after COVID, where that is. I appreciate that so much of what you're doing and what you're focused on for English learners is reflective of the work that we're looking at for, you know, students in different categories, you know? So the focus on chronic absenteeism, which, you know, I know that that has to be something that, it keeps us all awake at night, because if, if we don't do something about these trends, it's almost like anything else that we do, doesn't matter, because if our kids aren't at school, you know, none of, none of our strategies are going to be impactful. And we know that that number has come down a little bit this year from last year, but it's still, you know, this is, in the way that, you know, the pandemic was an overarching crisis, obviously now, chronic absenteeism is the overarching, you know, crisis. And we know it's not unique to San Diego Unified, but, but what I appreciate here are, and I think this is, you know, coming from a set of recommendations from D-LAC that Lalia presented, is very much about centering on the, on those relationships, individual conversations with families, knowing that those needs are different and that the solutions could be different. But some of those solutions, you know, that, you know, we've heard just even the past week or so, are pretty practical. You know, if it's raining, let's go pick our kids up, you know, so the parents don't have to walk them to school. I mean, there are some things like that, that, you know, just by listening to people, I think, you know, I think some solutions present themselves. So I, I really appreciate that, as well as, you know, the restorative approach, you know, when we're talking about disparate, you know, student discipline, you know, percentages, that work on meaningful graduation, which we're looking forward to, you know, the fuller presentation. One question, so we talk about the intensive supports for long-term English learners. What are the key preventive strategies so that we don't have kids become long-term English learners? What would you sort of highlight there?
Early identification for those students that are at risk, that are not making progress. So we're not just looking at the LPAC scores, we're looking at their performance in the, in the classroom, multiple measures. And so early identification, and this is what elevation is going to provide to us, really a very comprehensive look at triangulating all data, because it's not just going to have the state assessments in there, it's going to have our FAST scores, our FNP scores, all of that in there, so that the teachers can work with that and identify who those kids are and provide those small group interventions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to... Piggyback on what Richard was saying, at Horton last week, we discovered that was one of the reasons we had absences on a rainy day. So for me, it's about identifying even beyond, because we, some of us think that it may be that kids are not disconnected. That's a really high absenteeism rate, 39%. That's off the chain. But what are the reasons? Can we factor out some of the pieces, like the piece about, "I'm homeless," or "I don't have a way to get to school," or "Just don't know where I'm going to stay tonight," et cetera? What are the real reasons? Or are we dealing with a mental health issue where they're just disconnected from school? They're disconnected from reality and don't really care and just don't want to get up and go to school or whatever? We don't really, we haven't really identified the issues yet, and I know we're going to use it as a case study at Horton.
Well, I think that's the ask of all of our school leaders with the school sites, to identify the students. We also need to pull the data to make sure that we are monitoring the students with the school sites, and then designing our plans from a district to support the school site plans. So I think that when we talk about connectedness, when we talk about relationships, we have to get to know the individual students and work this theory of action. And, and it may be starting with a small group. And as Marissa said, paying attention to things that we, we have implemented, but what, what is the impact? We can't identify that yet on a large scale. So that's the plan, is we're asking sites through their SPSAs to engage with their communities, to really identify individual students, much like we saw at Horton. She had both quantitative data, qualitative data, very specific needs, making calls, finding out what families need, what students need, and then we can answer the question of providing the service and then replicating. And just know that it's going to be, as mentioned in the previous presentation, a continuum of services, because meeting the needs of it, and that's when you get into differentiation, and, and it is going to be awesome when we are able to get there. And that's what Marissa offered up, is we've been doing a lot, but what is it that is actually working? So to be continued.
Trustee Cotoriano.
I just want to start by saying a huge thank you. This is an incredibly comprehensive report, and I really appreciate it. I just had a quick question about equity, and you mentioned equity, and it's, it's really important. I was just wondering, when we talk about equity, let's look at more just equity in, in the individuals, right? My big question is, is about equity and the data regarding specific languages and, and making sure that, my question is, are our, for example, Arabic native students, are Somali native students having the same classification rates as our Spanish learning students or Brazilian, or Portuguese native students? And I'm wondering, is just, is the, are the same supports and, and the, being offered to all students in the same opportunities?
So I would say no. The answer is no, because it needs to be individualized to each student. So depending on the student's language abilities, really depends on placement of the student. So being able to identify where the student is with language, whether it's Arabic, whether it's Haitian Creole or Spanish, depending on their levels of the initial LPAC assessment depends on their placement. And then from there, we determine the supports that will be provided to the students. Our newcomers, for example, are receiving differentiated supports than the students that have been in the country for multiple years. So the, I guess the quick answer is no, it needs to be individualized by, for each student.
Right, thank you. I'm just wondering, like, is, is the data showing that we are doing our best for every language learner and not just one particular demographic?
I don't have that data point with me today, but it's definitely something that we can look at dissegregating that data, because when we look at reclassification rates, we're not looking at the particular languages, we're looking at a whole, anybody that is identified as an English learner.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know...
Can I, can I add one thing? Like, also, I think the main challenge is, we don't have accurate identification. So for me, being an Arab, I fall into white category. So that's a big challenge. The Somali, they fall into the African-American. So this is a big challenge. So we don't have an accurate identification, and I know it's not the district, it's beyond the district. So how can we identify the Arabic speakers and identify the Somali and identify every group to be able to move forward with the implementation?
And I'd like to add to that, although we don't have that data point yet, elevation will be able to provide us that, because we are entering the home language survey as a part of the database. So whereas before, we couldn't necessarily triangulate all that data and dissegregate it that easily, elevation will provide that.
Awesome, thank you so much. I, I guess I'm just, again, just thinking about how the data can be broken up to make sure that we're not underserving certain communities. So thank you so much for that.
Point taken.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to our speakers this evening. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We will now consider items I-1 through I-41. The superintendent's consent agenda, items I-4, I-26, I-34, and I-39 were previously withdrawn by staff. There is no staff presentation on these items. Do I have a motion on items I-1 through I-41? Trustee Dr. Pedersen has moved, and Trustee Hazen has seconded. We will start with our student voters. Trustee Cotoriano?
Aye.
And Trustee Nepa Messino?
Aye.
And all else? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, we're moving along here. We are at public testimony on non-agenda items. We have received, I think we have eight requests for non, and, oh, no, okay, no virtual, so they're all in person, it looks like. And I get, let's start with Michael Goldwater. Is Michael Goldwater still here? No? Okay. Let's go next to Heather Russell. And you have three minutes.
We were told, "Do assessments," and our son Ethan would get help, but San Diego Unified failed him. We were told, "Have IEPs," and the team would help him, but as parents, we were excluded from San Diego Unified, and you failed him. We were told IEEs would help, but they were dismissed, and San Diego Unified failed my son. We were told, "Go to due process, get a settlement agreement," but San Diego Unified breached it, and Mr. Jackson, you failed him. We were told, "Unenroll my son Ethan from San Diego Unified, funds would be given per the settlement for homeschool, yet you are keeping the funds, and San Diego Unified has failed him." We were told, "Communicate and discuss San Diego Unified breaching the settlement and not reimbursing funds with due process," but they dismissed our family and failed him. We were told, "File with the CDE," but when they deemed San Diego Unified was out of compliance and were to reimburse, San Diego Unified filed a reconsideration so that you can keep the funds, and you, Mr. Jackson, are failing my son, along with this board. We were told, "Go to the CAC meetings, give public testimony. Ed Basely and Sarah Ott, who's here, will help," but they don't, and they failed him. We were told, "Come to San Diego Unified Board meetings, give public testimony. Superintendent Jackson and the board will help," but you don't, none of you do. Mr. Jackson and the board, you are failing my son. We were told, "File with the ADR for resolution," yet San Diego Unified's stance is that you're going to continue to breach the settlement agreement and keep funds, and parents, we should breach the settlement and give the district full control of our child's education while he's unenrolled. San Diego Unified is failing my son. We were told, "San Diego Unified will meet us halfway." And by halfway, they want us to abolish the settlement agreement and do what you say 100% of the time. FYI, San Diego Unified, that is not halfway.
Thank you.
Halfway is when we both agreed and signed a settlement.
Thank you.
Okay, a lot of people went over their time tonight, I'm asking for a few seconds more.
Thank you.
San Diego Unified failed my son. San Diego repeatedly failed my son, they failed to protect him, they failed to educate him, and they failed to abide by a settlement. So my statement tonight, for all parents who have children with special needs, who have children who are medically fragile, who are starting their experience with San Diego Unified School District, prepare for hell. Prepare to hire lawyers, prepare to go to due process...
Thank you. You've had your three minutes.
Because it is not a matter of if San Diego Unified will fail your child, it is when.
Okay, next, we have up Elizabeth Griffith, if she is here.
I'm Elizabeth Griffith Tate. Hi, well, I've been patient, so thank you. Well, good evening. I am requesting your immediate attention to an alarming matter happening at Hoover High School that is following the patterns of a snatch and grab at Lincoln and Morris High School, where the athletic director, facility manager, and principal are capitalizing on an act of snatch and grab, mobbing nonprofit organizations, and repeatedly stating, "This is non-negotiable. You pay this amount, or you will not use the facility. Give me your money." You guys are looking surprised, right? Okay. I've been coaching youth track and field at Hoover High School as an outside organization for the past 31 years. I've had the right and permission to use the once undesirable facility, field that is now in high demand, going to the highest bidder. And I'm speaking in reference to the track and field. This is an outrage at a public facility. They are treating this like a private business and violating several CIF rules in the process. I am a taxpayer, a visible stakeholder in the community, and resident of City Heights. A proposal is forthcoming, requesting the board to address the concerns and vote to change this thuggish behavior. The only hours offered this year, after this week, is at 7:00 PM and afterwards. All kids need to be preparing for bed, for their daily rest and recovery. I empathize with the schools, with the schools for falling short of their budget goals to pay for their... pay for their custodial staff to meet their needs. I believe that district and state may benefit from ensuring these services are provided for the schools and not dependent upon demanding the outside community to use it, whereas there is an understanding that outside groups and organizations can come in and benefit. I have had a collaborative effort with all three schools, and now things have changed, and this has been happening at Lincoln, I think the second year, and has been happening at Morris High School for the past years, and someone is here to speak on that behalf. We'd love to entertain this and talk more about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Steve Johnson. Is Steve here? Okay, we'll go to Janay Roberts.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janay Roberts, and thank you, School Board, for allowing me to talk today or tonight on this long night. But I just wanted to come here just to voice my concern and frustration. My son's actually participate with Coach Tate on Flojo International, and they have grown leaps and bounds with just participating with this organization, not only fostering and growing peer relationships, but building perseverance and endurance and all of the things that they get from being on a team and being a participant of tracks. So I wrote this up because I actually wasn't aware that this was going on at Lincoln as well, but my sons also participate in football, and I've heard the coaches talk about some of the things that have been occurring with the youth football as well. So hold on, let me get my thing up. Of course, I'm not ready on here. So earlier tonight, one of the presenters had spoke about healthy students, so I think healthy students are also active students, and we already pay a wide array of tax monies that go towards our schools. So an additional fee to use high school tracks, I think it's against promoting healthy kids and against helping our kids learn about team dynamics, peer relationships, perseverance, and just challenging themselves. We want our kids to be outside learning and off of electronics. I have two kids, and as you guys all know, they're screen-dependent, especially now with, you know, we've, in this post-pandemic era of a lot of the education time is on screen, so just them being outside and being active, I think it's just beneficial to their overall growth. So making track clubs, like private track clubs, pay a fee takes away from parents that are already taxed with just having to pay the additional monies and upbringing and just everything else that goes along with raising a child, in addition to just the time that we're having to spend to make sure that they're exposing themselves to these types of extracurricular activities that contribute to them being well-rounded individuals. Just on top of that, I feel like charging extra money makes me question what's happening to our tax dollars and if it's being misused and misappropriated by these schools that are attempting to charge these additional fees on top of what we're already paying as tax-paying citizens. So I just want to say, how can this be America's finest city if we're being nickelled and dimed and an impactful, positive organizations are being nickelled and dimed just to access public school facilities that we're already paying for? The optics of this, not only is it embarrassing, but I feel like it's exclusionary and possibly discriminatory. So I just want to urge the board to consider not allowing that to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Marquita Brown. And after that is Tamika Smith. If she's here, she can come up to the front as well.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me, and it's Marquita Brown. Long, long night, but it was worth it. I am here to speak on behalf of Flojo International Track Team. We have been stakeholders in City Heights for over 31 years, and we have put many, many, many kids through college. Many, many kids have benefited, including myself, from our program. My kids now are third-generation Flojo International athletes. We call ourselves youth athletes. You can find our kids all across America. You can turn on televisions and find our athletes as Emmy Award-winning athletes and actors. You can find our athletes as medical students currently at UCLA. You can find our athletes also as medical doctors. Our athletes go on and do amazing, amazing things. These are athletes that have graduated from City Heights, from our local community right here in San Diego. This was a program that was founded and started on the city streets right here in San Diego, way before it was ever some very favorable track stadium that cost $4,000 for an astronomical semester just for training. So I'm asking the Board to please reconsider those fees. We just can't afford it as a nonprofit organization. We just can't, and it's not fair. It's just not fair. We're willing to, you know, to do what we have to do, to share the track we always have. We play fair. We want our kids to have the things that they've always had, a bathroom and a track and a field to throw and jump. So that's all we're asking for. We just want to have that opportunity Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. That's what we're asking for, five to seven. That's it. And in response, this is what we get. Like, we're out here, you guys are more than welcome to come out there and join us. We have an annual track meet every single year for the last 30 years. Come out there, wear some purple, we'd love to have you. Flojo, you know. So again, we would love for you guys just to come check us out, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, five to seven. We just don't want to have to afford to pay that, we just can't. The cost does not roll down to our families. They can't afford it. It's always been that way. They, we know that they can't afford it. So it's not anything new. We just want to keep it affordable for our community, for our families, the way that it's always been for our athletes, so that they can then turn around and be good citizens and pay it back and pay it forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And next we have Tamika Smith.
Hi, my name's Tamika Smith, and I too am here. I'm representing Flojo International, as well as some of the other local track clubs in San Diego, and their need to be able to access these track fields for the after-school activities that these students are in need of. Listening to some of the other speaker during some of the other presentations talk about supporting social and emotional health and things like that, I think this kind of ties into that. So I think it was kind of well worth the wait for tonight. I am 44 years old. I started with the track club when I was 12 years old, so I can attest to what it has done for me, and I think if you guys could reconsider those fees and, like she said, come out and see what they're saying no to before saying no, because what they're saying no to is not just to the access, but it's also to kids having a safe place to go after school, having something else to do, giving their parents a couple of extra hours if they are working to know that their kids are in safe places and safe space and in good hands. It's also promotes a healthy lifestyle for them, it gives them something else to do. They get opportunities to travel, so the access goes far beyond just using the facility for the two hours that are being requested at the respective schools that were named. I'm not sure of any of the other schools that are requesting those fees, but I do know that it's a disservice to say no and to put that in place on what it hasn't been. If you were to look at the students, some of us adults, where we are now, what we're doing, not just from Flojo, but just from San Diego, and the statistics of what's going on in the communities with kids right now, why they are bored, what they are doing with their time, and to see if some of these things were put back into place for them, if those numbers would go down, like with the suspensions, with using vaping and things like that. They don't have anything to do anymore. So to put a dollar amount on having the ability to use a facility that's a safe space for them is putting a dollar amount on really keeping them safe. So I'm just, again, up here to ask you guys to please reconsider and to, whatever you're maybe close to where you all live, check out the programs and see what's exactly going on. So before you, before that no is a concrete no, maybe there's an opportunity to turn that into a yes, and we should have done so a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last, we have Brenda Taylor. Is Brenda here? Last but not least.
Okay, good evening. I've previously discussed the current speech observations, but you may not have realized how we could have possibly gotten to where we are today. The foundation of school happens in kindergarten, and the kindergartens now, they're a very special group. These kindergartens provide, kindergarten provides child with an opportunity to learn and practice the essential social, emotional problem-solving and study skills that they will use throughout their schooling. The development of special self-esteem is one of the most important goals of kindergarten. Engaging question-answer dialogue with classmates and teachers, work is on team projects and work problem-solving. Kindergarten is also the foundation of learning phonics, speaking clearly, and reading. From September 20th to April 21st, this special group of kindergartens received their primary public education via Zoom, which is approximately two hours of Zoom and one additional hour of independent computer work. After spring break, April 2021, the kindergartner's first onsite experience had very strict rules as follows, which include wearing a mask full-time. The classroom group was the child's group. When the children arrived at school, they met on a designated spot or a mascot, which was painted on the blacktop, and each spot was approximately six feet apart. Children's classroom seats were not closer than five feet from each other. At the time, the CDC stated that these students needed to only be three feet apart, however, they were five feet. Children were not confined to just their desks, they had limited movement in the classroom. They were able to get out to go get a drink of water and use the restroom. There was no sharing of classroom supplies. These children had an opportunity to eat their snack during recess time, but they had to sit or stand on their mascot or their painted spot on the blacktop. Children maintained a six-foot distance while eating, and they ate at their stable with their class group, basically two children per table, all facing the same direction. Each table had a painted mascot or a painted spot or an X the child needed to sit on and remain seated while they ate their lunch. How could a child entering kindergarten have gotten the opportunity to learn and practice these essential social, emotional problem-solving and study skills that they will use throughout their schooling under these conditions? How is their developmentally of self-esteem, which is one of the important goals of kindergarten? How could a kindergarten work as a team? Were they given the foundations for learning phonics, speaking clearly, or reading, or while wearing a mask? Were they able to see the difference with proper tongue placement when pronouncing sounds of words? So let's move on to these kindergartners that were now in first. Oh, okay. First grade, they had the same.
Thank you.
Okay. The state's mask requirement ended, except, and then on April 4th, the inside-outside.
Thank you.
Although these truths that I have spoken may be difficult or painful for you to hear, actually watching these things happen to our children was more painful. These are our children, our future generations. Children across the nation are experiencing speech and language. How is San Diego Unified going to rise above all the other districts across the nation and help these children that are experiencing speaking language? I have the thing, the full speech, and all the pictures that are on your social media sites of all these children's wearing masks. Do they look happy?
We are going to stop the public testimony at this point, and I also wanted to say that with regard to the issues about the track rental, that'll be deferred to the superintendent to look into that matter. So thank you very much to everyone for coming out. We appreciate you providing your comments to the Board and the superintendent today, tonight, and we appreciate your input very much. Please know that your perspectives are important, and they help us to better serve the students, the parents, and our community. With that, this concludes the agendized business of the Board, and our next regular meeting will be held on February 28, 2023. The meeting is now adjourned.